Okay, we're coming up to six o'clock. I'll check with our city clerk. We're starting to see folks come on. Cindy, how are we looking in terms of start time?
Let's give it one more minute.
Okay, and I'm seeing council coming on. I know that the vice mayor may be a little bit late, but suggested we just get rolling and then he'll catch up with us. He'll be here as soon as possible.
Cecilia, if you want to turn off your video until the item's called, please.
I'll look to you, Cindy, to let me know when you think we're ready to go.
We are good to go.
Very good. I'd like to welcome folks to our City of St. Helena regular city council meeting Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022. And I'll look to Mr. Japhopolis, our city clerk, to help us with the remote access instructions.
All right, I'm going to share my screen. All right. For remote access for the public to participate, they would dial 669-900-6833. At the prompt, you would enter the meeting ID, which is 849-0872-7709. And you would press the pound key during public comment, you would press star nine to speak.
Thank you. And we also have a notice about Spanish language translation. In future meetings, if folks would like that service, they can contact the city 72 hours ahead of time and arrange for that service. So we'd like to make that announcement as well at this time. So we'll move now to our pledge of allegiance. And I've asked Police Chief Hartley to lead us in the pledge, if he would.
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. Please place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. I'll look to our city clerk to see if there are any changes in this evening's agenda.
There are none.
Very good. So with that, I would look for a motion from the council on adoption of this evening's agenda.
So moved.
All seconds.
Thank you.
Councilor Hardy?
Yes.
Councilor Chateau?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Vice Chair Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. And we will move to our roll call, please.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Here.
Vice Chair Doring?
Here.
Councilor Chateau?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Hardy?
Here.
Very good. So now I just want to take a moment as we get into into the meeting. It's a particularly heavy agenda, many really important, large issues on the agenda tonight. So want to make sure that everybody's staying focused and concise in their comments. And as we deliberate and hear from the community, we want to have a just a good, calm, orderly, courteous meeting. Recently, there've been some notes that there's been some tone that our staff has been the recipient of that that we want to make sure that everything that the way we speak with our staff, et cetera, is very respectful. We all have different opinions through whether we're community, whether project proponents, council, but working with staff, it's always appropriate to be respectful. And we just want to have that tone and that sort of courteous approach, both in our meetings and in our day-to-day interactions. So just want to make that note. I also, before we get into the meeting, I want to take a moment just to recognize the situation globally, the situation in Ukraine. What's happening there to help sort of with our empathy in a situation like that, and also in keeping in perspective what we talk about here and what we do here so that we're thinking both locally and globally as we move forward. Move forward with gratitude, et cetera, as we're still sort of shifting forward out of COVID, et cetera. So with that, we'll move now to public comment. And this is general public comment on items not on the agenda. And I think, you know, we're anticipating a really, you know, a lot of public comment has come in by writing. So there may be a tremendous amount of public comment this evening. So my thought is to, we normally give four minutes for public comment. And I think tonight, if there's no objection from council, we would limit it to three minutes, both in the in the regular public comment and then also on the items. Just to make sure that everybody has time to speak if we have a sort of a stacked queue for public comment. So if there's no objection to that, we'll open the public forum, and this is where folks may speak on any non-agendized item and make comment that that questions, brief questions could be put by council members for clarifications. But in accordance with state law, no substantive discussion or action may take place unless or until the matter properly appears on the agenda. So with that, I'll I'll look to our city clerk to see if there's any general public comment.
There are no raised hands.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We'll bring it back now and then we'll go to our reports by staff and city council, future agenda items and AB 1234 reports. And this is reports by staff and or council members on items of general interest. Brief questions for clarification may be posed and answered. And council members may request that items be placed on a future agenda, except under certain circumstances. The Brown Act prohibits any other discussion or action by the council, city council. Is there anyone from city staff? I'm seeing our city manager, Mr. McCann, and then our chief Hartley.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good evening. We do have two reports that we'd like to give tonight. They're really just kind of previews of coming attractions. But we thought that they were items that the council and I believe we're going to have a substantial group of the public watching tonight might be interested in. So Chief Hartley and Chief Sorenson just had some updates of some items we'll be bringing forward to council shortly. One of the chiefs, how about you, Chief Hartley? Would you like to go first?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor, city council and city manager. Recently, we've received several noise complaints in regards to Shamrock working during the hours of darkness, specifically between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. This is due to the gas pipeline replacement and construction project on Napa Valley's 90-year-old gas line, which is currently north of St. Helena and adjacent to Highway 29. This project was introduced three years ago and approved by both state and local authorities. PG&E had conducted numerous public meetings, distributed flyers and provided presentations to each municipal council, county board of supervisors, the farm bureau and more. We met with Shamrock, PG&E and Caltrans yesterday to look at their permitting, mitigation and further public outreach. We discovered that Caltrans only permitted PG&E to conduct this construction between the hours of 9:00 PM and 5:00 AM to have as little impact as possible on Highway 29's traffic flow. We were also informed that this construction is estimated to begin in downtown St. Helena as early as late June or early July. The details of the downtown section of the project will be presented by PG&E staff at a future council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Mr. McCann. Next month, I'll be bringing you the fire season outlook from June on to let you know for March through May is normal for this time. Preparedness of the fire department will, I'll include the staffing. Also for a prevention update on our inspections of schools, hotels, short-term rentals and businesses, which, including downtown businesses, we've all walked Main Street and issued pre-checklists so everybody can get their shop in order. And that will be next month.
Thank you very much. Mr. McCann, is there anything else? I'm seeing Dr. Mitz with her hand. Doc, Dr. Mitz, our administrative services director.
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth and council members. Just a note for the public and for the council. We are still in the process of completing our fiscal year 21 audit financials. Due to several concurrent emergencies and staffing shortages due to some emergencies, we have been a little bit delayed. However, our auditor does have all of our information now and we're currently doing Q and A with them. So hopefully, within the next few weeks, we'll have our audited financials for 21 wrapped up. In addition, we are going full swing on our budget for fiscal year 23. So we are going to be looking at potentially the first week in April, having a preliminary budget forecast and budget priorities discussion with the city council. Again, note, this is a very, very preliminary, very beginning process for us, and we will have another another budget workshop scheduled in May. So I just wanted to provide the public and the council with that information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other staff commentary at this point or inputs? Seeing none, I'll look to our council. I'm seeing Councilmember Chateau.
Thank you. Was this for council reports?
Yes, please.
Okay, I I see that there's the public comment from Elsie Aresman, if I'm saying that correctly. She's a Moms Demand Action volunteer. She had reached out to me about looking at the safe storage ordinance for all firearms. I did meet with Chief Hartley and our city manager to look into it a little bit more. And after talking to both of them, I wanted to see if there's council support to bring this back as an agenda item when staff feels like it would be the right time.
Let's support that.
Thank you.
Is there a way for us to learn more? So is that your idea that we learn more about that as it comes back?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And and thank you for recognizing that public comment. Appreciate that. Any others council input at this point? I'm seeing none. I've got a few items. I'll move quickly. First, I just want to touch on water conservation. There's been little rainfall, which affects both our surface and groundwater resources. So let's all, you know, get back to really working together, big and small users on conservation. And we'll be, as the city, looking at how we approach this year coming up. So we're being proactive and we hope the community will continue to be so as well. Fire safe efforts. It's been warm, windy, getting drier. So let's consider conditions with any type of flame or sparking device. Folks can contact the fire safe council at nappafirewise.com to learn more about defensible space, home hardening and proactive preparation. And for those who are still setting off illegal fireworks, and that's been something that understand has occurred, please stop before potential disaster occurs. Please stop with the fireworks. I want to make note of a few upcoming efforts. There's a developing concept called Long Summer of Pride and Progress in support of LGBTQ plus inclusion and our multicultural inclusion efforts. The idea that Pride Month is great. So what does it look like to extend that out over the summer? The Little League fields look great. With great thanks to the Little League Association for all the work they've done and great seeing kids getting out there and getting the benefits from that. So hope to see folks out there. Hope folks go out to see the games. And then finally, on Friday, April 8th, the city is a co-sponsor of the Napa Valley College Viva Mariachi program with a performance at the St. Helena High School Performing Arts Center. The city participated in this event before COVID, and it was incredible. So we'll hope to see you at the St. Helena High School Performing Arts Center April 8th, 7:00 PM for the Viva Mariachi performance. It's just incredible. So I hope to see folks out there for that. And with that, then we will move forward on our presentations and public recognitions. This is National Library Week proclamation presented to St. Helena library staff, Lynn Albrecht, Maria McGuire and Cecilia Raffo. I am having a bit of a situation bringing this one up. Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have that one accessible?
I do.
Would you mind jumping in on that? For some reason, my tech is not working on that.
Absolutely. Hello, representatives from the library. Nice to see you all. Neighbor Cecilia, good to see you. I like how you all fit within my little screen here, right in the middle of my screen. This is a proclamation declaring National Library Week 2022. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of connection and build community. Libraries connect people to technology, providing access to broadband internet, computers and training that are critical for accessing education and employment opportunities. Libraries offer opportunities for everyone to connect with new ideas, become their best selves through access to multimedia content, programs and classes, in addition to books. Today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of the building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. In times of crisis, libraries and library professionals, including our own, play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. Libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. To adapt to our ever-changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. Libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity or socioeconomic status. Libraries are the cornerstone of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Libraries, librarians and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, our mayor, Mayor of the City of St. Helena, along with fellow council members of the City of St. Helena, proclaim National Library Week, April 3rd through the 9th, 2022. During this week, I encourage all residents to connect with their library by visiting online or in person to access resources and services signed by the Mayor of the City of St. Helena. I kept out all the wherethas.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Really appreciate it and really appreciate your reading that. And so I'm going to just hand this over to our library leaders in just a moment. But want to thank you for the incredible job historically, day-to-day, but also how much you helped our community get through the last two years with the pandemic. Just your presence, your effort, your focus meant so much. So thank you. And I'll just pass it over to you for some words.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and council members for this proclamation. It's it's really, it has been a long two years and it has been almost a year to this month that we actually were allowed to have patrons back in the library. And we continue to see more and more people come back. And it's really nice to see their faces again and have them be here because they didn't and couldn't. And so we're really happy to be able to offer the services we offer to them. So thank you.
We are very excited that as we are fully open, we are completely back to our regular programming, our regular services and events. We're actually having a big event tomorrow night. It's our Spanish language celebration tomorrow. We have invited the members of our Latino community to come back to the library, have a refresher of all our services and resources that we offer in Spanish. We're going to get a lot of new library cards going and our really, our goal is to celebrate and acknowledge the diversity of our community. And so we are very excited for our event tomorrow night. And then next Wednesday, we invite everyone to come over to the library at 5:00. We're having a live string band from PUC Elementary. They're going to be playing some classical music as well as some favorites from Pirates of the Caribbean, Star Wars and The Incredibles as well. And stay tuned for April. We have much more events coming your way and we are excited that we are fully back and we thank the city and the council for your support to get us back here to this point. And of course, our wonderful community, we wouldn't be here without you. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. And great to hear about the ongoing programming and things coming back. So thank you very much for being here. Okay, we'll move now to item 7.2. This is the One Bay Area Grant Cycle 2. This is the program to address the Calistoga to St. Helena Vine Trail funding shortfall. This is a presentation by Kate Miller, who's the Napa Valley Transportation Agency Executive Director. And we, Kate, we really appreciate you being here, Ms. Miller, to help us sort of understand this a little bit better.
Well, thank you for having me. It's been a really long time since I presented to the council and I look forward to seeing all of you in person again soon. So, you know, the genesis of this is that we had a significant shortfall on the Calistoga to St. Helena Vine Trail project. And one of the things that sort of drives NBTA staff is to not lose any money in the region. And we were at risk of losing a $6.1 million active transportation program grant. We were running out of time to obligate the funds and not having enough money to deliver the project was certainly a driver there. So we had a $4.2 million shortfall. And 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 just a little bit of a, some background history on this is that Napa County, not the county itself, but all the jurisdictions within the county has had a long history of losing revenues to the region. And I'd like to just say that I've been here And I'd like to just say that I've been here now for 10 years and we haven't lost a penny. And what that does for all of us is it gives our funding agencies a lot of faith in the things that we do, a belief in that they can give us money and we're going to do the right things with the money. And we're going to do everything we can to make sure we use that money in a timely, effective, and efficient way. And we've been very successful at that. And this is partly the reason why unfortunately, we had to postpone some of the projects that were funded in one of the programs in order to backfill the $4.2 million shortfall in the Vine Trail. And one of those projects is a very precious project to you, but it's also precious to the region, and that is to replace your sidewalk project. And I just wanted to just reinforce the fact that the funding that you're going to get in place, the funding that you have is only going to be a slight delay and probably will help you and your staff be on time with that project. So you'll be able to get that money in the fiscal year 2020, or I should say the calendar year 2023. And so you be on the same timeline, I think, that you were before, where you can list the project sometime towards the end of this year and then award the project sometime in the spring of 2023. So it's really not going to affect the sidewalk project at all, but what it is going to do is rescue the $6.1 million Active Transportation Program grant. And then, which is going to be a benefit for all of us, right? The next time the city of St. Helena wants to go out for a competitive grant source or for finding funds that we get locally, that this Metropolitan Transportation Commission and the California Transportation Commission are going to have a lot of faith in our ability to deliver those projects. So so we want to also just thank you, extend our appreciation for both your staff and the council's time in going through this process with us and slightly delaying your sidewalk project in order to really advance the Vine Trail project and to rescue the Active Transportation Program funds. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for 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 helping us to understand that a bit better. I'm seeing our city manager, Mr. McKeon.
Thank you and hello, Kate. Thank you for your help on this. I can just tell the city council that I was speaking with our public works staff just yesterday about projects, including this one, so that I would understand better the timing of the shift in funding and the likelihood of receiving replacement funds. Kate is correct that we do have work to do and there's a there's a construction calendar that one follows. And so this funding shift, I don't think puts our sidewalk project in jeopardy. In fact, we've got work to do in this and we are undertaking that work now. I'm very heartened to hear that funding will be available for us in future. We certainly have to go through the processes, but it's great to hear that we're able to help a project move forward without doing any damage to our own very much needed project. So that's just summary of where we're at.
Thank you. And and it is a very challenging, but I think this demonstrates that this regional approach, this collaborative regional approach, we're able to approach all these different aspects and projects that we need to get accomplished. So thank you. And I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. And Kate, thank you very much for your update. It's great to have you here tonight. I just, one question is, do we know why we had a $4 million shortfall?
Yeah, that's a good question. I would just say that bids are coming in all over the place. The Soscol Junction project, which is the the intersection of State Route 29 and Soscol, that came in 24% under. And the maintenance facility that we just opened not too long ago, that was over as well. So it's sort of all over the board. And I think part of the driver is what materials are available right now, right? I think the supply chain is really driving a lot of this. I think also the challenge with labor and not being able to have enough staff members to do certain kinds of projects. So it's just, it's a little bit of both of those things. It's also a little bit of, we have a lot of money, a lot of transportation money out on the street right now. So we're competing for contractors with other counties, with other, you know, regions. So it's several things going on. And and it's just, it's created like the gas prices, a lot of unpredictability. We just don't know what's going to happen. So this one was significantly low. And I think I'm heartened by the number of bids that we got and that they were pretty close. So I feel pretty confident that the bid that we are going with, which is gelati construction is solid and that we're going to be able to deliver this project within the budget that we've got established.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional counsel inputs? Well, seeing none, I'll say thank you very much, Ms. Miller. Really appreciate it. It's it means a lot to us to hear from you to help sort of clarify what we're what we're doing.
Yeah, thanks again for the help and support on this project. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Kate. Very good. Thank you. Okay, we'll move now past we have on our counter, but nothing, no reports this evening from our youth representative briefing, but just want to acknowledge that that's now a part of our calendar, which is really tremendous. We'll go to our consent items. My understanding is that we want to pull item 10.3. And then I'll read through the others. And if folks either on the council or community want to pull another one, I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy.
Yes, I would like to pull 10.2.
10.2, okay. And so I will then mention 10.1 and 10.4 to see if there's any interest in in pulling and discussing those items. And are we seeing anything from the public? I look to the city clerk.
None.
None. So I'll bring it back and I'll entertain a motion for 10.1 and 10.4.
I'll move approval of 10.1 and 10.4.
One second.
And our roll call, please.
Councilor, Councilor Chateau?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring? Mayor Elfris?
Yes. And if Councilmember Chateau is okay with it, if we do 10.2 first and then 10.3, just to keep things in order. Very, very, very good. Thank you. 10.2, Councilmember Hardy.
That was a yes, by the way. I lost my screen temporarily. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Elfris. I pulled this just to propose that we put it on a future agenda for discussion. I don't want to take the time this evening, but I'm hoping we could see that on our next agenda for discussion.
I'll look to our city clerk. Is that time wise work with what needs to occur?
Well, we already conducted the first reading. What is it that you have a question on?
I'm sorry. I was really wishing to pull 10.3, which was polled anyway. So I've forecasted my comment on 10.3 in advance.
Okay. So Councilmember Chateau pulled 10.3 and let's take your input on that and then we'll see where we are with that.
I just asked earlier a question to staff if we could have them say a few words about it because I wanted to make it more real for both me and the community and have a discussion as we know water is such a concern and that we haven't been getting much. So I was hoping to bring it alive by having a quick report out on it.
Thank you. My understanding is Mr. Jansen is here from Public Works to give us some information. Is that correct, Cindy? And then and then to circle back to Councilmember Hardy, I also am supportive of a, you know, longer conversation on this issue as we're moving into this drier situation. So I'll support that, having this agenda is to discuss if that's still where you'd like to go with it, Mr. Hardy, Councilmember Hardy.
Yes, I think an in-depth discussion would be timely. I take note of the submittal today of the annual report from the county's consultants to the Groundwater Sustainability Agency in which it's reported that the most recent two-year period for Napa County is the driest two-year cycle since 1898. So I do want to see this come back for an in-depth discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And then so we'll hand it now to Mr. Jansen, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity for being able to comment on this item. Rainfall has been short for this rainy season. However, our city has been very, very fortunate. The atmospheric river event that hit us back in October hit us square on and produced a lot of rain which landed in our reservoir. So the Bell Canyon reservoir is actually very close to capacity. And it provides about 80% of the water that the city needs over the course of the summer. At this point, our forecasting is showing that we can make it through to the next rainy season without much difficulty. And we are advising to keep water conservation at a level of phase one.
Thank you, Mr. Jansen. And we will circle back very soon with a more in-depth conversation. And thank you, Councilmember Chateau, for pulling this, bringing it up, and Councilmember Hardy for following up as well. And thank you, Mr. Jansen. So with that, oh, I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy.
Yes, having mistakenly pulled 10.3, I'm thinking we need a motion to approve. Excuse me, I mistakenly pulled 10.2. I was gonna, I moved to approve 10.2 on consent.
Good job.
One second.
10.2 and 10.3?
We need both.
Yes, what she said. 10.2 and 10.3, please.
Perfect. Okay, Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Chateau?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Elfris?
Yes, thank you. So now we'll move to our public hearings. This is item 11.1. This is ordinance adding chapter 17.1, 17.138, time share uses in section 17.138.060 to title 17, zoning of the St. Helena Municipal Code, amending section 17.48.030, central business, and 17.52.030, service commercial, and deleting section 17.112.130 of the St. Helena Municipal Code. And this is prepared by Mr. Walsh, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give you a brief presentation on the on the proposed ordinance and and then be available for any questions that you may have. And of course, any follow-up after the public hearing. There's fairly detailed staff materials on this, but I did want to give a bit of context and summary for the benefit of the public. The ordinance sits before you tonight is an update to the city's existing restrictions regarding timeshares, which have been part of the city zoning code since 1982. As the council is all aware, there's been considerable discussion of this issue in the community over the past couple of years. And as part of the process of reviewing our existing code in light of this discussion, we as staff concluded that these restrictions would benefit from an update. So to be clear, the proposed new ordinance is not something entirely new, but is an updating of our existing rules in light of the fact that the ordinance has not been updated in about 40 years. I'll take a bit of time to walk through the key components of the ordinance and then open it up to any questions that the council may have. To start out, the ordinance includes fairly detailed recitals and findings that outline the policy basis for the ordinance. And in summary, the city's basis for the existing ordinance, as well as these modifications, are two primary concerns. The first is the city's desire that's articulated in the general plan and elsewhere in the city's planning documents to maintain a balance between the city's tourist and visitor-based components of the local economy and the long-term viability of the local residential community. In order to maintain this balance, the city's utilized a variety of means within the city's residential neighborhoods, including the city's limitations on short-term rentals and this time and the existing time share ordinance. The time share ordinance, both the existing one and as it's proposed to be modified as before you tonight, prohibits time share uses in residential areas because they're a more intensive tourist-oriented use than typical residential uses. They're characterized by frequent visitor turnover, a lack of meaningful interactions with neighbors or other or between time share ordinances, or excuse me, between time share owners and with other members of the community. Members of the community, as you've seen in the comments that you received tonight and that you've received over the last couple of years, have complained of parking impacts near the existing properties in the city that are operated as time shares. Excessive noise late in the evening, traffic noise and parking concerns due to frequent visits from cleaning, landscape maintenance, and pool cleaning services that come to the properties between each stay to prepare the home for the next guest. This kind of short-term visitor-serving use of the property is not a residential use in nature. It's more like the commercial visitor-serving uses that we see in hotels for bed and breakfast. They're more appropriate in the city's commercial districts. In order to maintain the residential character of our residential districts, the city has chosen to restrict timeshares within within these areas. The second primary policy reason that we, that's discussed in the recitals is the impact that the use would have on the city's existing housing stock. The lack of affordable housing in the city is very well documented. And as we discussed in the staff report, the city's housing issues are significantly impacted by the fact that demand significantly outweighs supplies within St. Helena. If the city were to allow existing or future residential units to be used as timeshares, those timeshares would take more residential units out of circulation, further decreasing the supply of homes and exacerbating an already severe problem. The city's made a number of efforts recently to address the housing needs of our community, including facilitating projects for low-income and working families, but converting existing residential units to other uses will reduce the existing supply of housing and undermine the city's efforts to address its housing needs. After the recitals and findings, the next kind of key section of the of the ordinance is is the definition section. The proposed new ordinance provides a set of definitions are used together to define time share uses are restricted within residential districts of the city. The definitions listed all work in concert, but to highlight some of the key provisions, the ordinance defines a time share use as a as a use of one or more accommodations or any part thereof as a time share property pursuant to a time share plan. A time share plan in terms in turn means an arrangement plan or similar agreement or series of agreements pursuant to which the purchaser of the time share interest receives the right to exclusive use of an accommodation or accommodations for a period of time for less, for a full year, less than a full year on a recurring basis. That's essentially a paraphrasing of the of the definitions, but those are really the key points. The key in this situation is that timeshares are characterized by the right to exclusive use of the property for a limited period of time on a recurring basis. This is the characteristic of timeshares that prevents these properties from being used for long-term residence residency, exacerbating housing issues and resulting in homes being used instead for a more intense vacation-oriented manner with people cycling through the home and resulting in related impacts to the neighborhood as outlined in the staff report. After the definitions, the next key provision is the enforcement provisions. The proposed new ordinance would provide updated enforcement language to allow for enforcement of the ordinance, much in the same way that the city currently enforces its short-term rental ordinance. We believe this is a will be a more effective approach since it's something that the city is familiar with and will allow the city to be more preemptive since the the new ordinance will since the new ordinance will prohibit advertising of timeshare uses in addition to the actual operation of timeshare uses. Finally, and this is, this is one section that is a bit of change from what we have currently in the ordinance. The proposed ordinance would allow for timeshare uses as defined in the ordinance within the service commercial and central business districts within the city. Given that the primary concerns that have arisen with timeshare uses in the city are based on the impacts that this high-intensity use has on residential districts, the use would not necessarily have the same impacts on commercial districts. Given that this use could be developed in commercial districts without having the same impacts, the ordinance proposes to allow timeshare uses as a conditional use within the service commercial and central business districts. There's obviously a lot more detail in the staff report, which I know you've all reviewed. So I'll leave it at that. And if there are any questions that the council has at this time, I'm happy to answer them.
I'm going to open it up to the council and then to the public. And there was significant public comment, written comment on this. I have one question, and then I see Councilmember Chateau. So the references to the service commercial zoning and the the new use, the new areas that you brought up, was there any language previously related to that in the previous?
There was not. In the previous ordinance, the way that was structured, the way that the restriction was structured was to prohibit the use within residential units within the city. As we were looking at the ordinance and how it would be appropriate to kind of update it, to make it more in keeping with our overall zoning ordinance, we decided that focusing on individual structures did not make as much sense as focusing on residential districts because that's where the main concerns were. And so if we were going to do that, then we, I felt like we shouldn't be silent as to other areas of the city and where where this use, you know, may be appropriate or may not. So it was kind of silent on that issue. And so rather than just outlining them throughout the entire city, given that the impacts that have been expressed, the concerns have been expressed within the community are focused on the impacts that timeshare uses have within residential districts. I felt like we could propose them in in commercial districts and as conditional uses. So if there are potential impacts within those, within those districts, it can be analyzed and considered as part of the proposal.
Okay, with a conditional use. Okay, thank you. I'm seeing Councilmember Chateau.
Thank you. My question was in the same area. Sorry, I didn't ask this ahead of time. But I'm looking now at page ten, where under the timeshare uses in service, commercial, and central business districts, and wanting just to make sure I'm understanding that the conditional uses would be limited to accommodations and upper floors. So not like a whole building. This is upper floor of a mixed use.
Right.
Building. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other council in- or comment question at this point before we go to the public? And I am seeing none. So we're going to open public comments. And if folks want to speak, if you want to put your hand up, it'll get us, give us an understanding in a sense of what sort of a cue we're looking at. And I'll look to our city clerk. One of the, one of the things I hope folks will understand, if we do get a lot of comment, we're going to put a three-minute time limit tonight. And if, if you want to support something that's already been said or something like that and want to be more concise, that may be helpful as we move through our issues. But we'd certainly want to hear from folks, so I will look to our city clerk now.
And we do have public comment. I think I'm going to allow you to speak. You can unmute yourself and address the council. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Nisi Moyo, and I am Public Affairs Manager for Picasso. I am also a St. Helena resident of twenty and odd years. My partner and I raise our family here, and we are proud to patronize local businesses and are active volunteers in the community. As I shared with the City Planning Commission at its March first meeting, I have serious concerns about the proposal before you this evening. This is both a solution in search of a problem and a drastic government overreach. Co-owning residential property is nothing new. It has been happening in our community for decades. According to data from the Napa County Tax Assessor's Office, of the thirty-four hundred residential parcels in St. Helena, more than half are owned in an LLC or trust that allow for multiple owners. There could be any number of reasons someone would want to structure a property ownership this way, privacy, insurance, or real estate planning reasons, or to ensure that shared property ownership is managed fairly and according to the wishes of the owners. The legislation in front of you carries some dramatic consequences that should alarm every one of the people who own properties with others in St. Helena, as well as anyone who wishes to have the option of doing so in the future. The new ordinance attempts to regulate co-ownership as timeshare using vague and circuitous definitions, but in doing so, it reduces all co-ownership to timeshare. What does this mean in practice? It means that St. Helena will now treat co-ownership between siblings who have inherited property, work colleagues, friends, or domestic partners who share a home, but who stagger the periods of the year that they enjoy that home as, quote, "timeshare." How many people in town honestly think of themselves as being in the timeshare business just because they happen to be, happen to be in their home for only part of the year? In other words, anything short of a hundred percent use by a single family threatens to sweep St. Helena property owners into accusations of being a timeshare. It's a radical reimagining of property ownership that ignores the realities of life in our community and is vastly out of proportion to the so-called, quote, "issue" of the four homes that Picasso manages in St. Helena. Co-ownership is fundamentally different from timeshare. Sadly, that is not reflected in this ordinance. Assurances in the staff report about who is and is not targeted by the ordinance should be little comfort to the people who face a knock on the door from code enforcement and a demand to see their papers if his ordinance's powers are used to their full extent. And if the plan is to single out only certain so-called violators of this new definition on the basis of their property manager, how does the city plan to avoid a claim of selective enforcement? It can't. The new ordinance clearly singles out Picasso and respectfully. None of the city's stated reasons or findings underlying the new ordinance are tenable. For example, targeting Picasso does not ensure that homes are available for long-term occupancies. How can the city possibly know or control how much time any single homeowner intends to spend in their home? Nor does banning Picasso help to, quote, "maintain" the city's so-called, quote, "authentic" "small-town quality of life" or, quote, "rural, small-town quality." Picasso homeowners use their homes in just the same way as many other residents in St. Helena. The city is clearly exceeding its authority in enacting such a broad sweeping ordinance that goes far beyond regulating your use of building structures or land and instead targets who can reside in certain properties and even the content people can post or discuss, threatening massive fines and even imprisonment. Does the city really intend to enact an ordinance that could threaten criminal prosecution against honest brokers, agents, and printing? Yes, please.
We have a three-minute limit this evening if
Yeah, unfortunately, I was prepared for four minutes to utilize that full, considering what, on behalf, I'm speaking on behalf of Picasso. You know, I would ask the favor of another minute to just finalize.
Four minutes. We'll keep things at four minutes this evening.
No, no, no. Our rule is three minutes. Finish up.
I respectfully urge the council to withdraw the ordinance and enter into a real dialogue with our company to explore these issues unmediated by the city's staff members, whose agenda has gotten in the way of a serious answer to the questions on the council's minds. Thank you.
Thank you for the public comment. And so I'll look to our city clerk to see if there's additional public comment. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Connie, you can unmute yourself and address the council.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. I am so grateful for the efforts of our city government to modify our timeshare and fractional ownership ordinances in order to prevent their expansion in our city. Picasso's shameful misinformation campaign is a desperate, last-minute attempt to change the narrative. Remember, it is Picasso who sued the city after being informed it was violating our zoning ordinance for transient occupancy timeshares in our family neighborhoods. Yet Picasso thought it was above the law and continued to flip modest houses and never once reached out to concerned residents. Please do not buy into the baseless fear Picasso is promoting. I thank you for considering adoption of the revised ordinance to protect our community from predatory companies like Picasso. Good evening.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment?
Claire, you can unmute yourself and address the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Claire Barr, and my family and I have lived in St. Helena for over twenty-five years. Yesterday afternoon, I picked up my ringing landline, and there was that telling pause, you know, before the outsourced caller connects from whatever country they're calling from. A man started talking, and he was hard to understand. So it took me a minute to figure out that he said he was from, quote, "St. Helena Priorities Council," unquote. His rehearsed spiel was that St. Helena city governance should get back to what's important and quit fighting Picasso. And he quickly added, "Would you agree?" I launched into, I definitely would not agree, telling him that he was participating in a disinformation campaign. His response to that was, "Can I just say that you agree?" The only word he seemed to understand was a bellowed "No." Now, we all know that this campaign is coming from Picasso. The egregiously dishonest pamphlet I also received with photos of city council members said "paid for by Picasso" at the bottom of it. This campaign is the first and only community outreach we've had from them, and it's a doozy. These are the people who expect to be welcomed into small-town communities? As Maya Angelou might warn, they have shown us exactly who they are and also why this ordinance must be passed. Thank you to the council and all of city governance and staff for putting together such a well-crafted document. Please approve it tonight and get it on the books. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you for the public comment, and I will look to our city clerk to see if we have additional public comment.
Elaine, you can unmute yourself and address the council.
Hi there. Good evening, and thank you for taking my comments. First of all, I want to thank the city for taking up this issue and protecting the quality of our residential neighborhoods. I also want to point out that besides pulling out all the stops with push-pulls, phony surveys, and door-knocking, I also think it's worth noting that Picasso recently contributed four thousand nine hundred dollars to Napa County Supervisor Alfredo Pedrosa. The reason this concerns me is that Pedrosa is not even running for office right now. So what exactly are they hoping to achieve with this contribution if it isn't for some special favors or some kind of undue influence at the county level? I should also add that Alfredo Pedrosa is currently being investigated by the FPPC for alleged self-feeling. So of all the supervisors Picasso chose to support, I think it tells a lot about them that they chose this particular supervisor at this time. So thank you for putting together this ordinance, and I hope that you pass it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for the public comment. Is there additional public comment?
Either Shelley or Robert, you can unmute yourself and address the council.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. I'm Shelley Hubner. For the past year, my husband, Robert, and I have been the proud and respectful co-owners of twelve forty-two Madrona Avenue in St. Helena. Prior to purchasing our Picasso, we had visited St. Helena many times over our nearly forty, fifty years of marriage, always admiring not only its exquisite physical beauty and semi-rural nature, but its glorious wineries, delightful boutiques, world-class restaurants, and friendly people. We love its accessible businesses, from the Model Bakery to the Labo M Consignment Store, benefiting local hospice, to the cycling shop. There is little we enjoy more than an afternoon of wine tasting, followed by dinner under the stars and a movie at Cameo Cinema. We bought our Picasso in St. Helena precisely because we love the community. We follow closely the issues of pressing concern to its people, including traffic, water shortages, and wildfires. We are revolted by the concept of timeshares. By co-owning our St. Helena home, we contribute our fair share of property taxes to the community and have a true stake in its future. We made a sizable financial investment of our retirement funds to own there. We take seriously the city's rules and regulations. We are not party animals, but rather value the quiet, peaceful enjoyment of our home there. St. Helena is where we come to rest and relax. During a typical day, we'll walk to the bakery for breakfast, visit the farmer's market, take a bicycle ride, meander through shops to get a gift for our grandchildren, or take a dip in our pool and try a new recipe. We occasionally invite family and friends to join us, but we are ever cognizant of the fact that we have neighbors upon whom we should not impose. We have met some of our St. Helena neighbors while on walks, and we're hoping to get to know them better over time. There is nothing we'd like more than to have them over for a cup of coffee or brunch, to join them in a local volunteer project, or to gift them a jar of our homemade jam. In Arinda, where we spend most of our time, we give back to the community by serving on the Planning Commission and the Art and Public Places Committee. We are active seniors and welcome the opportunity to assist wherever needed. The passage of the proposed amended ordinance would be very hurtful to us and our Picasso co-owners. And it will also cause significant harm to countless others who co-own homes in St. Helena. This mean-spirited ordinance with its unreasonable prohibitions and draconian fines would turn innumerable law-abiding members of the St. Helena community into lawbreakers. We implore you not to harm us and your many other respectful neighbors in this way. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for the public comment. And we'll now look to our city clerk to see if there's additional public comment.
There are no other hands raised. Sorry, there's now a hand raised. Just one moment. Pam, you can unmute yourself and address the council.
Hi, my name is Pam Smithers. My husband, Mark, and I have lived in St. Helena for almost thirty-four years. And we own a couple of second homes in other places, Tahoe and Montana. We also belong to a timeshare, which we've owned since, I don't know, nineteen eighty or so. And so I just wanted to say that there's a big difference between going to a place as a timeshare owner and going to a place that is your second home. In Montana and Tahoe, we volunteer. We know our neighbors. You know, all the things that you would think. They know us. We help each other. I have never gone to a timeshare. The timeshares are like in Palm Springs and, you know, Canada skiing areas, Colorado, Aspen. These places that St. Helena is on the verge of becoming like. But we've never, ever even thought about volunteering. You know, it's a timeshare. You know, you go there once or twice a year. That's it. So I just wanted to give our personal perspective, embarrassing as it may be to say that we own more than one home. But there's a big difference between timeshare and second homes. And I hope you will, you will consider that in your, in your process. I hope you will approve the ordinance. Thanks very much.
Thank you for the public comment. Additional public comments?
Tricia, you can unmute yourself and address the council.
Thank you very much. Good evening, council members. My name's Tricia Smith, and I'm grateful to you for your ongoing commitment to the city of St. Helena and its residents. You know, Picasso entered wine country with no real understanding of neighborhoods and communities. They came from big money in tech industry where their world existed through computer screen. But tonight, hopefully, they're getting a taste of the real people with the real power. It, I live across the street from a Picasso home. This is nothing like a second home. We do not know anybody who's going in and out of that residence every week to two weeks. I absolutely implore you to please absolutely go with this ordinance. We appreciate all that you are doing, and thank you so much.
Thank you for the public comment, and we will look to see if there's additional public comment.
Nancy, you can unmute yourself and address the council.
Hi, good evening, council. I'd just like to briefly say, no matter how you dress it, when a company legally when a company legally restricts how much time a owner, co-owner, renter, or whatever they are, it's a time share. So, you know, the fact that they pay taxes and split the cost of the home and so forth, the problem is they are legally restricted to shares of time. It's a time share. So that first Picasso lady, her energy is a really good example of what I personally don't like about Picasso. And to the second Picasso lady, who is apparently a really good neighbor when she's here, we welcome you and hope that many of the other shareholders that are already here are like you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for the public comment. I'll look to see if there's any additional public comments.
I'm seeing none.
We are seeing none.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Given the actually light public comment, relatively speaking, I'd be happy to give Nassim Moel another minute, but it's up to you, Mayor. I think we're trying to balance it out. And if she had important things that you want to finish in that last minute, I'd be willing to hear her out, but I, I think we, we just need to keep track of it, and it seems like we're managing it okay, but it's up to you, Mayor, if you want to offer.
I think that's a, I think that's a good suggestion. And so I will see if she is still on and wants to give us a few more thoughts. Ms. Moel.
There we are.
Yes. Hi there. Thank you. I, I do appreciate that. And, you know, I must apologize. I heard the ping, but I was, I was speaking, and so I, I just dismissed that. But yes, I thank you for your time, and I, I just, I'm grateful for that. Just to finish off what I initially wanted to say was that in sum, the new ordinance is a rushed overreaction that neglects the realities of Picasso's business, captures hundreds of unrelated homes in its dragnet, and creates massive confusion and uncertainty for current and aspiring St. Helena homeowners. It may be an attractive short-term sop to the tiny number of vocal detractors who have strong feelings about one company in the mad rush to do something. The city risks inviting broader but more serious issues than what to do about just four homes. That was just the last piece that I wanted to finish, and I did want to say just on my behalf, just as a resident who's been in the community for twenty-four years, that I've had a variety of different conversations with so many different neighbors, but that in particular, I know that the, the actual city itself is a hollowed-out city. And for the last thirty to forty years, my mother, you know, she's, she's been in the area for fifty-five, sixty years. What I would say is that we have seen such a decline, and that the conversations perhaps should have taken, we should have had these conversations perhaps maybe, you know, twenty years ago. The fact that we're having them now because of Picasso, I think, is a, it's disheartening, and it feels inauthentic. And it feels very geared towards one particular company instead of looking at this as a community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for the public comments. So with that, one last check with our city clerk, making sure there's nobody else in the queue here.
Seeing none.
So we see none. We'll bring it back to the council. Is there any common commentary input from council at this point? I am seeing no raised hands. Is there anybody who would like to push forward on a motion on the recommended action? Or do we want to get into a little more discussion here? I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy.
Well, I think some discussion is in order. I'll offer a few thoughts. One, in response to Ms. Moel's last comment, having served on a city council thirty years ago, I can tell you with certainty that concerns about changing character in our residential neighborhoods go back at least thirty years. Business models like Picasso's didn't exist then, so the concerns were articulated in a different context. And I honestly don't recall whether time shares as such were part of that conversation, but it's certainly not a new concern framed a bit more broadly. The other thing I want to say, I've been contemplating this a bit over the last couple of days while reading various comment letters, both in support of the Picasso business model and opposed to our ordinance and, and the conspicuously larger number in support of the ordinance and in oppose to the Picasso business model. To best of my understanding, in these Picasso LLC membership homes, the various homeowners do not necessarily know one another at all. In fact, I think the whole structure is organized to insulate them quite thoroughly from one another. Each time a Picasso owner occupies a Picasso residence, they do so exclusively. This is dramatically different from more traditional forms of co-ownership, such as what happens when children or grandchildren inherit a property as tenants in common. And so while I have no doubt that individual Picasso owners are interested in interacting with the community in, in which we live, I'm struck by the fact that the vision of community that's created or reflected within the home ownership structure is at best impoverished, at worst, really kind of grim. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. And then I'll look to, I see Councilmember Chutu.
Thank you. I was just going to say that I do think that this is a reasonable and thoughtful regulatory approach. This is a new business model that we're now adapting to and updating our ordinance. So when I read through everything that our city attorney prepared, I know that he has spent a lot of time on this. And to me, it seems appropriate with what we're dealing and the changes with our affordable housing and at the point that we are with our affordable housing in our community. So I support moving forward with it. The ordinance tonight.
Thank you. I'm seeing Vice Mayor Doring and then Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, in my practice as a lawyer and just at being a student of public speaking and folks who are into political advocacy, I often spend a lot of time listening to what is not said, because that's very telling for me. You know, about a year ago, maybe it was beyond that, we had a number of folks who talked to us on our Zoom call about their, their experience in Picasso homes here and around Northern California, and they were very heartfelt. And the woman who spoke today, I, I think on an individual basis, very heartfelt. It's not about individuals. I have not met this, this woman. I thank her for her contribution i- in the public engagement arena. But what I note that's missing from all of these conversations is what it is that you intend to give to our neighborhoods. What are you going to give to our community? What are you going to do for our community? It's all about the enjoyment experience, the taking from our community. We're going to have a transaction here. I'm going to give you a dollar. And, and that's my giving, really. It, it really is akin to a tourism kind of model, and I don't think folks necessarily intended to portray themselves that way, but that's the result of how I, I see it. Folks in these models are not, they're not going to be members of school boards or city councils or all the subcommittees we have in schools and cities. It is transactional, and that's fine. We are a tourist-based economy, right? But we have a place for tourists. Right? And it's not in our neighborhoods, right? This is the thing. There are places, I believe, that the Picasso model will work, and we, and this ordinance seems to carve out a few exceptions and service commercial and commercial. You know, I'm happy with the ordinance. I think there may be a couple other places, but I, you know, not in our neighborhood. So to me, that's extremely important, and I hate to be that crass about it, but it's, it really is, you're getting to the heart of what a neighborhood is and who you can rely on, and that, that important social compact you have with your neighbors, that's the missing piece. And I'm not here to chastise any particular individual owner of a, of a Picasso. Fine, to each his own. But that's what we are trying to maintain here. Some argue that we've already lost that with second home ownership. But we cannot give up on this. We have to keep fighting for our neighborhoods. This is what we have. I would just end by saying I was extremely disheartened by the last couple of days of the the Picasso disinformation campaign. Extremely disheartened. That is not reflective, hopefully, of what you stand for, Picasso, and it's not something this community is going to tolerate. First, you start with sort of an invasion into our communities, and then you talk about folks here being xenophobic, and then you're coming to bring democracy to us. We need to be saved somehow by Picasso. That, that's the message that's being received by me and many others. Well, I don't need to be saved. I thank you very much for your invasion. Your disinformation campaign frankly is, is really a sad campaign, and whoever thought of that, whoever that genius was who came up with that campaign, wow, unbelievable. I would, I would say that's not a good way of, of being a citizen in our community, because it's, it's disingenuous, it's dishonest. Folks read that, they have, they come to a different conclusion. So that's, that's really too bad. But again, you have a right. This is America. We have free speech rights, but I would, I would just caution not to do that in the future, because it's not working. I'm very supportive of the ordinance, and I'm looking forward to moving forward. I do think we need to continue the conversation, as one Ms. Moel talked about. It is important. We cannot afford to hollow out our community. We need to fight for that. So I'll just stop there.
Thank you. And I see Councilmember Hall. Volume mute, Councilmember.
Sorry. Thank you. I just wanted to echo the Vice Mayor's comments, especially with regard to, to this week's campaign outreach. It was, it was exactly the wrong message to receive from Picasso, I think. You know, I've thought, what's the difference between a second home and a, in a quote-unquote Picasso-type model? And I think, you know, we need a lot of money in this community, right? We need our streets. We need our infrastructure. We need everything. So is there any benefit in having somebody live in a home year-round, even if it's eight separate families? In theory, there's people there versus a second home, for instance, who maybe are shopping at our coffee shops. Maybe they're renting a bicycle. I, I'm not sure what they're doing. Maybe they're going to a movie. But if you look at the homes that were purchased, I don't think any of them were second homes to begin with, right? There was probably a family living there who was contributing to the community as a single family, who was holding positions in our community, and they were still shopping in town. So I'm not sure what the net benefit is economically, other than, to Paul's point, there's a net takeaway for the community with this model. And certainly in our residential neighborhoods, to Telester's point, there's a reason why I think this ordinance is, is very good and why it's written to allow concepts like this in certain commercial districts. That's what this is, basically. So I'm, I'm in favor of this ordinance. I think it's well-crafted. Ethan, thank you. Very, very good work, and that's, that's all I have to say on it.
Thank you. I have just a couple of comments. Over the last few days, I was shared some type of a flyer. I, I believe I, not going to mention names of any companies, but the flyer suggested that the council was somehow distracted by this from other important work we should be doing. And while I certainly, folks can criticize me, this council, while there are many things we don't agree on, this council has been very focused on the critical work of infrastructure, water security, fire preparation. This council's been remarkable in terms of being proactive about looking at really critical, important issues, of which this is part of that comprehensive approach. So I just want to just take a moment and, and respond to what I saw out there and, and support this council and the, and the work and the focus. So with that being said, I, I too support this, this ordinance, and I think for all the, the reasons mentioned by the council, the work by our city attorney on the, the ordinance and the staff report, I think was really helpful and clear. And so with that, if there's no additional comment from council, I would entertain a, a motion on the recommended action. So moved.
Second.
And that was by title only and waiving further reading, correct?
Correct.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Chutu?
Yes.
Mayor Elfrid?
Yes. So with that, we'll move on through our agenda to item eleven point two, and this is this is, I'm sorry, this is the consideration of the proposed issue on Mills Lane, and this item is going to be moved again to the April twelfth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. So we'll move on, I'm sorry, to item twelve point one. This is discussion and consideration of recommended alignment of the Napa Valley Vine Trail Corridor through the St. Helena, the city of St. Helena. And this is gonna, we're gonna be led into this by Priya Nixon, our assistant to the city manager.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I was going to start with a few comments, and then Priya will follow me.
Great. Thank you, Mr. McCann.
Yes, and then we'll have Chuck McMinn, who will offer some comments. If council asks any questions, clarifying matters, and then open for public comments, and then council deliberation. So this is a very exciting item, one that's been long in the making. It's been around the valley for a number of years and, and has included conversation in St. Helena. It has a long history of support from city leaders and many residents, both in St. Helena and out, and throughout the county. The Vine Trail is reflected in our own general plan, and it has been encouraged by many in the community and including city council members. Last year, the city council encouraged partnering with the Vine Trail to pursue a line, to pursue options to bring the trail through St. Helena. Before deciding on the, on the ultimate alignment, council directed staff to seek input from our, from our residents throughout the community through very robust community engagement. Priya Nixon will describe the community outreach, the inputs that we've received from that, and ultimately, the recommendation that we have received from the city's advisory committees, the Active Transportation Sustainability Committee, and the Parks and Recreation Commission. The Vine Trail's come a very long way in the past decade or so, and has tremendous amount of success. We can see it in reality and in use in the valley already. There's more to be done in coming weeks, in coming months in St. Helena to bring the vision to reality. Tonight's a very important step to bring the project forward, and I encourage the council to ask questions so that we can help you move this matter forward. Tonight, we're hoping Tonight, we're hoping that the council can uh, identify the preferred alignment or perhaps alignments uh, through the uh, city of St. Helena. Once we have that, then staff uh, will conduct further outreach, will work with the various uh, stakeholders, our residents, business owners, uh, who are in those segments to understand uh, the concerns uh, and to identify appropriate facility types. As you might know, there are different types of bicycle facilities, class one, class two, class three. Those are all different. They have different uh, implications, have different requirements. Um, but we need to identify those uh, as well as the design details, and then also, very importantly, the traffic calming uh, details and methods that will be employed to address uh, issues. Our Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee and the Parks and Rec uh, commission will be presented with the input from uh, that outreach and we will uh, have them formulate a formal uh, recommendation uh, both on that alignment that you have provided direction and the details and the types of facilities for those segments, reflecting the input from our residents. I am working with Mr. McMinn to ensure that things are practical and satisfy the various needs. This is a very, very important project, uh, both for St. Helena and regionally. Uh, it requires uh, careful care uh, to mesh the project uh, with the um, uh, elements of a built community. Um, we have to be respectful of neighborhoods, businesses. We really need balance in order to uh, make this successful. I think tonight's uh, direction from council on a preferred alignment uh, will very much help us uh, move forward with some clarity. Uh, and I'm confident that over the next uh, uh, several weeks, we can get that clarity and bring back a very strong recommendation for the uh, not only the, the final alignment, but also the details uh, to move us forward into uh, the funding requests. With that, uh, Priya, can you describe the outreach and the recommendations that we have to date?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. McMahon and Mayor Ellsworth, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be here today to talk to you more about the alignment options. And um, I think that Jim did a wonderful job outlining some of the really helpful information that is in the staff report, and that's all attached to the agenda. Um, so what I want to do, Jim actually mentioned um, the that, you know, bicycle facilities and multimodal transportation isn't something that's new to the city in St. Helena and that our general plan actually calls for it in our bicycle um, network and our, our bike plan. So what I think would be helpful, I just want to share, I'm, I'm a visual person, so I'm gonna share my screen. It may be a little hard to see and I'm gonna try and zoom in here. Um, but I just want to show that this is figure five point five, which is uh, mentioned in the staff report that talks about um, this uh, future multimodal transportation network that we have um, that's in the general plan, and I think that can be really helpful. Um, so I just want to make sure that folks see this. Um, and then what I'm going to do, I have a lot of different things I want to show here. Um, I'd like to talk a little bit about the different alignment options and then I'm going to talk about some of the feedback that we received in our outreach. So with that, I am going to share my screen again. And I think you should be able to see it, thumbs up, that you can see my screen. Yes, awesome, great, okay. So um, Mr. McMahon was talking a little bit about uh, there are different um, definitions for uh, what is a bike facility. And this is all again attached to the staff report um, in the agenda. And I think it's just helpful for folks to understand that there's a class one, uh, which is a bike path, a class two, which is uh, considered a bike lane, and a class three, which is the bike route with the sharrows. And then a class four, which is, is a separated bike facility. Um, and so I just, I think this is helpful uh, just in uh, very big terms for folks to understand. But we're really here to talk about alignment. Um, and so this might be a little hard to see. I'm gonna zoom in a little bit. Um, but this is the city and um, in the green, and I'm just looking at my screen right now. Um, you'll see that there are some different, um, there's different green marking that shows different alignment options. And I'm gonna go into detail and talk a little bit about uh, what those options are. Um, but we have some options on the east side of town, and then we have some on the west side of town. So I think this is actually really helpful for people who are visual like me to see what the um, what it kind of looks like from a bird's eye view. So I'm gonna go to my next slide here. Okay, so um, again, we're, our focus here tonight is really about alignment. And this is um, just another way of looking at it. Um, and so I'm gonna go, probably come back to this slide, but let's talk about the west side of town. So um, I want to talk a little bit about the options coming in on um, the west side. So you'd come up on twenty-nine, and this option shows that you would cut over at Mitchell and you would go on Oak Avenue up to Adams Street. So that's one option in terms of the west side. I'm gonna move through these pretty quickly here. So the next option is actually pretty much the same, but um, you're gonna cut over on Spring. So this is calling um, to cut over on Spring Street. So the other one was Mitchell, was to cut over on Mitchell, and this was to cut over on Spring Street. Um, and so that is one uh, component on the west side. So let's talk a little bit about the east side. So on the east side, um, you'd go on twenty-nine on Main Street, and then you would cut over at Pope Street right here and then go on Church Street. Um, and so that is the Church Street option that uh, we referenced in the staff report. And then you would go on Railroad, right, Railroad Avenue. Um, and so I'll go to our, our other option here on the east side, and this is the Mills Lane option. And this option was proposed at the January eleventh city council meeting. Um, city council gave staff direction to go and study this route. Um, and again, this is on the east side, so you'd go up on Mills. And you would cut over along College, College Avenue, which is where the Napa Valley College is. Um, and then go on Pope Street and cut over to Star and then go up to Adams. And so that is the other option on the east side. So what I'm gonna do actually is I'm gonna show again, I'm gonna try and zoom in here. Um, this is um, this is the puzzle that we're looking at. So we have some options on the east side, looking at the Mills Lane option and then the Church Street option. And then on the west side, you have the Oak Avenue option, which uh, you could either cut over at Spring or Mitchell. And so those are the four options that we've looked at. And I'm actually going to stop my screen share now. And again, all this has been attached to the agenda. And I'm gonna talk just briefly about some of the outreach that we've done because you gave staff uh, direction to go and conduct some outreach. So we've done a few things. We've hosted some virtual meetings where we've gone over all of these different routes. Um, and we heard from the business community specifically on their feedback, um, as Mr. McMahon was talking about. And then um, we also uh, did some, some in-person events. We actually hosted them at the Napa Valley College and um, we had a lot of folks come and they were just dropping opportunities to really listen to people. That was the direction that you wanted us to just hear what the feedback was. So another uh, thing that we did was we conducted a survey through Survey Monkey, and that was posted on our um, city website that we had dedicated to the Vine Trail. So that survey was really helpful because it gave some demographic information and some information on why uh, what is important in terms of using the Vine Trail. We also asked for some comfort level on these different options. Um, and then we had a really important question that asked like, what is your additional feedback? So I'm not gonna go through all of those comments, but they are attached to the agenda and I would really encourage everyone to take a look. And then um, just one other thing that I'll mention that was really important that you asked us to do was to take all this feedback and to present it to the Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee. And when we were planning that, uh, we realized, you know, we should invite the Parks and Rec Commission to come to that meeting and uh, opine on uh, recommended alignment as well. And so that's what they did. And on March second, we hosted a virtual meeting and all of the public comment that was um, submitted um, at that meeting has been attached to the staff report, so I would encourage you to look at that. And the feedback that we received was that there's, there's definitely general support for the Vine Trail. But as uh, Jim was talking about, um, bringing uh, bringing a regional uh, bike facility through the city, there are some considerations, including traffic calming, safety, um, impacts and residential neighborhoods. Um, certainly parking was something that was addressed specifically on the Oak Avenue alignment option. Um, and so um, all of that feedback was really helpful for the committee to hear. And the committee actually had an opportunity to provide a recommendation on taking all the feedback from the community um, and hearing the four options. And what they did during that meeting was they said, um, well, we, it was really important to hear all the, the different considerations. So what we're going to suggest is um, to have the Vine Trail come north um, and uh, to Mitchell and sort of stop there. And then the Vine Trail come from Calistoga, because there's a segment coming directly from Calistoga and, and stopping at Adams or Hunt along the Railroad right away. And then we've heard that there's a lot of feedback in terms of, you know, that, that middle area, we still want something. And our general plan says, you know, uh, we like uh, the, the, this bike boulevard class three option. So let's consider a class three option in between those areas. And so the committee had an opportunity to weigh in and provide their feedback and they, they really liked that option. Um, so that was something that uh, you asked us to bring forward to you was the feedback from uh, the meeting with the Active Transportation uh, and Sustainability Committee. So um, everything, as I've mentioned, is listed in the very detailed staff report. Um, before I hand it over to Chuck, I don't know, uh, Jim, do you have anything that you would like to add uh, before I hand it over? Okay, great, thank you. So with that, um, I'm gonna hand it over to Chuck and I, before Chuck, I just want to say thank you and Sean for all of your partnership on this. It's been, it's been really great working with you. So with that, Chuck?
Thank you, Priya, and thank you, council members and Mr. Mayor. And uh, this is a, this is a great day to finally be, uh, have collected uh, uh, a whole ton of public input, which we really appreciate. I mean, we're trying to be open and inclusive in how we do business up and down the valley. And um, I think this process that we've gone through has helped make the Vine Trail route through St. Helena better. And we've been at it for longer than a lot of people think. The, the original contract that produced these great reports from the BKF folks was let by the city council in June of twenty nineteen. So we're coming up on three years of working together to try to figure this out. And I, you know, I'll be the first to admit, the Vine Trail will be the first to admit that this is the, probably the trickiest little piece of getting a contiguous Vine Trail anywhere in Napa Valley. So, you know, we appreciated all the input. Uh, you know, starting from that time in June, we, we had preliminary designs in December. We had the first kind of draft in printed form in May of twenty twenty. We had our first outreach meeting with the community in August of twenty twenty. We uh, we thought that we were going to get to a route in St. Helena before September of twenty twenty, which was an important day, because that's when we filed the last ATP application. We were hoping to include St. Helena, and it was just clear that it, that wasn't gonna work. And so uh, COVID certainly slowed things down. And so we filed that application with ATP in September of twenty twenty without St. Helena, saying that the trail would go from Yanville up to the southern St. Helena city limits. Uh, but we continued on. We had, uh, we, we presented to the ATSC for the first time on these, these four preliminary routes. Uh, in October, we uh, and and then in February of twenty twenty-one, we heard we did not get the grant. We didn't get the grant because we didn't score well enough because we didn't connect to communities. So, but we continued to uh, to try to move forward. We met with the Parks and Rec Commission in August of twenty twenty-one. We met with at least fifty uh, individual meetings over the summer of twenty twenty-one, working on these four, the first four uh, route concepts that were identified in the BKF report that Priya just announced, you know, just went through. And then we, we, in addition, we met uh, with the ATSC committee again in November of twenty twenty-one. We met with the St. Helena School District in December of twenty twenty uh, one. And again, just this, just a few weeks ago in March of twenty twenty, in this March. Uh, we, we, as Priya said, we came back to the council in January. You had an additional route that you felt it was worth investigating, which we did. And, and those four public outreach meetings, and I think really importantly, the survey as well, which got uh, close to five hundred inputs. Uh, so there's been a lot of, a, a, and that culminated in the meeting several weeks ago with the ATSC and planning committee, where they, they basically said, we like the idea of a, of a class one up to Mitchell or Pope, and we like the idea of the class one, it looks like it fits from Hunter, Adams North to Pratt, but what do we do in the middle? And they suggested at that time, a class two or class three. And we, we said, that's fine, but in, let's go one step forward and make sure that it's the class two or class three that can be protective of individuals and bicyclists and pedestrians. And the way to do that is to make a slight extension called a bike boulevard. That basically says prioritize bikes and pets, slow the traffic down, limit the volume of traffic. So there's more of a balance between the bicyclists and the pedestrians. And so I think that's where we are now, a, a bike boulevard on, on Church Street is probably the best alternative. Although I will say, the Vine Trail would be happy with any one of the four alternatives mentioned in the BKF re- report. The only thing I will say about the Mills Lane option that we, that we in the, in the city council looked at after the January meeting was that it's not gonna work because it would require an easement from uh, a private landowner who's said that they're adamantly against doing that. So unfortunately, that, it, options off the table, but the other ones, we'd be happy to anyone. But it seems that the least impactful one is the, 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 uh, the route along Church Street. And I know there will be people that uh, that say that uh, they don't like that, and there are people who say they do like that. Wha- what I can say though, I think, is that the majority of people do like this. And if you look, especially when I look at the survey results and it's, and, and we see that uh, nineteen percent say they wouldn't use a Vine Trail, but seventy-two percent, I mean, eighty-one percent say that they will. And um, seventy-five, seventy-six percent say that the Vine Trail is important in St. Helena and only twenty-four percent say it's not important. So there is a, a majority of people that do support it. And um, there's also lots of public comment, but we have to take all the public comment with just a little bit of grain of salt because it's only the impassioned people who provide the public comment. I, I put a, and even in that, I've counted every single one of the comments. Uh, and it's about two-thirds are pro comments and one-third are negative comments. And I'm happy to share the data with them, with you. I've got it down to the individual number, you know, number, but uh, but I think that um, we, we can make this happen. And, and the, the thing that I said, the thing that people are just, th- these are serious people, those who, who, who are impassioned on the, on the, on the other side, on, on the side that say we don't want this. They, they're not crazy people, they, they, but they have a fear of the unknown. And hopefully, in many, many circumstances, that fear is outweighed by the benefits. And I'll give you just one little example and that'll be done. And that, when the Golden Gate Bridge was proposed, there was a significant number of people that were against it. They said it would ruin the vista of this, of the San Francisco Gap. They said it would put the ferry companies out of business. They, the military said it'd make San Francisco a target of, of military action. And if you had a bridge, it had to be painted black or it had to be camo green. There were people that said it was impossible to build because at the time it was the lo- the tallest and longest suspension bridge in the world. Then there were people that said that would fall down in their first earthquake. They were all legitimate concerns, but now, a hundred years later, we know that the benefits far outweighed those concerns. They were not in proportion to the benefits. And just quickly, the benefits of the Vine Trail as we see it. So first is it's for us. It's seventy percent of the people who use the Vine Trail today in, in the county, live in the county. They have a Napa Valley zip code. Uh, there's gonna be a lot of people using it. We saw a forty-six percent uptick from uh, before COVID to during COVID. That's, that, that's about 500 uses a year over the 12 miles between, let's say, Yountville and St. Helena. That's about one bicyclist, one pedestrian, once or twice a minute. That, that's eight times as many people as use the sides of roads. That's three times less accidents, because three quarters of all the accidents, the bicyclists and pedestrians are caused by cars. That's less, less injury when an accident does happen. That's, and the other issue is even those 30% of the people who will be tourists, they're gonna contribute about $15 million a year in economic revenue to the city of St. Helena and Yountville in this 12-mile stretch. That's a significant support for our businesses. And on, on the maintenance side, there's concern about the cost, the maintenance and the cost of construction. The Vine Trail is, is committed to providing $3 million to this round of ATP application. We're asking the city of St. Helena to commit somewhere between 300 and 500 or $600,000. That's about what the city of St. Helena put into the stretch from Pratt Avenue to, to Calistoga, which the contract, as Kate said, is going to be let, and we're gonna start constructing that in, in, in a few months. So I, I think it's, so we're gonna pay, we're here to pay for half the maintenance. We're building an endowment that already has over $1 million to support that, so that it can be there in perpetuity. So it, it's really a great leverage for a few hundred thousand dollars. Spread, or let's say even $500,000 or $600,000, spread over three years. Your annual budget is $70 million a year. So it's somewhere like 0.12% of your city budget will be required, where the Vine Trail is putting in six times that much money. So it's, it's a fantastic investment, and we just urge you to, to help us to get to yes. And as we said, we'd be happy with any of the routes, but we think that the, the one that has no impact on parking, the one that's the most direct, the one that really involves only one single block in all of St. Helena where bicyclists and pedestrians are prioritized over cars, is a very reasonable trade-off. So, thank you. And what I thought we would do is if there's any questions addressed to us, Sean is taking them all down. She'll use her comments at the end to help us answer them, but let's collect everybody's input and see what we can do.
Thank you, Mr. McMahon. If I could just jump in for a sec. And first of all, I, I want to concur with you. I think this is a great day. It's really terrific we've gotten to this point of this discussion. And as you were just mentioning, structurally, how we're gonna, you know, wanna have this conversation is, we'll have some council discussion, we'll open it then to public comment. And, and Ms. Casey White from the Vine Trail will then be available. We'll sort of inventory what questions come in. Well, first, if there's anything from the council, initially, we can answer those, move to public comment, sort of inventory the questions, and then the Vine Trail folks can respond at the end. And we know that also, we have somebody, Graham is here, Mr. Wadsworth, if we have questions on the grant funding. And so what I would like to do is, I, I just have a couple of comments. I'll open it to the council, and then we can touch in with Mr. Wadsworth to get a little more of an understanding of perhaps what the, what we're looking at in terms of the grant. My thoughts are that, as challenging as this may be, tricky, challenging is, that's what we do. Innovation is what we do. This is a really terrific opportunity to, to look at how we approach this. I really think of St. Helena as the heart of the upper Napa Valley. I know Yountville got that moniker, but St. Helena really is a hub for the up-valley. I sort of think of what we're doing a little bit like heart surgery. We've got some new arteries coming through. How do we want to do that? And I think working together in this sort of collaborative manner, we're really gonna be able to find a path. So I am excited about this conversation this day and really appreciate the work together. Are there any initial council comments, and before I open it to Mr. Wadsworth, to help us understand a little bit more about the grant that's being sought? Okay, I'm, I'm seeing no council questions. So, Mr. Wadsworth, could you just help us understand a little more about the grant that's, that's being applied for here?
Sure. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Ellsworth, the council staff and the community. So my name's Graham Wadsworth. I'm managing supervisor for the Napa County Public Works Department. And if this project does move forward, I would be the project manager. And I was past project manager for a segment in Yountville, which is one of the first segments that was built as part of the Napa Valley Vine Trail. And then I was just the project manager for one of the most recent segments on Devlin Road near the airport. So the Board of Supervisors has committed $4 million of funding towards this project. So this is, meets one of their strategic planning goals, to improve the transportation system for all users. And they want to create a healthy, safe and welcoming place to live, visit and work. So they, as Chuck mentioned, we applied for cycle five from the Active Transportation Program. We did not score well, to be honest. And with cycle six, we feel there's a better opportunity, because now there's the federal funding from the bipartisan infrastructure law. So there's more money available, but there's still a lot of competition for this funding. And we've, the grant is due on June 15th. The application is still competitive, and we feel that if the city and the county can work together to come up with an alignment and a cost sharing, then we have a much better chance of being awarded the funding from either California Transportation Commission or the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. So I just want to thank you for consideration to build a true gap closure between the north end of Yountville and the north end of St. Helena, and that will benefit 70% of the users who live in the Napa Valley. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Wadsworth, I had a question. In terms of looking at the map, and if, if what we're asked to do, being asked to do is to sort of present an alignment, a line that, that, that we would support, is there any tremendous disadvantage to perhaps recommending two, two possibilities? If we look at both Oak and Church, and moving forward with, with an idea that they might both be considered as a way to sort of help mitigate, so that one area doesn't either become over-impacted or somehow we, that, that gives us an opportunity to improve two areas that might help bike traffic sort of work through the town?
So that, one of the, we've been reading through the new guidelines, which were just released last week in a call for, call for projects. What they want is a defined scope. You know, if there was a true class one path, which is a dedicated path from Calistoga all the way down to the Vallejo Ferry, that is the ideal. But we understand that, you know, we have to make compromises in certain places. So what we want, what we need to do by June 15th is to have an alignment, a scope of work. And they've been very clear that we cannot really change that scope of work. And so we really want to have some decision on the alignment before we submit our application. Now, Chuck and I were talking today, and, you know, if it's class three, or if it has two potential alignments, then I think if we write that into the scope of the work, then it is possible that that would be the, the application and acceptable to the reviewers of the application.
Thank you. So just to clarify at the end, so, so what would be on there? The scope of work could, could encompass something a little broader than the one, the one thread?
Yeah, it does. Most agencies, most, you know, most agencies will submit an application with just one alignment. You know, it goes around a lake, or goes along the railroad, or a highway, or, or whatever. Thinking was, maybe one side would be northbound and the other side would be southbound. And these things are, we can work out during the design phase of the project.
Okay. And, you know, we also, to me, something that was, was attractive was that outer route. I recognize what, what, there may be some challenges with that. But if we were to identify something in, in the corridor, the Oak Church corridor, something like that, perhaps that outer route could still be something considered as an auxiliary. But we would want to definitely dial in on, on something that's closer in. Is that my understanding?
Well, what they really, some of their goals of the project, of the ATP grants are that, you know, they really want to, you know, increase the portion of trips that are made by bikes and walking, increase safety and mobility, achieve greenhouse gas reductions, enhance public safety. So really, what they're looking for is, are there disadvantaged communities who would benefit from this project? And that's one of the criteria that we'll, you know, get points for. So if we can, the more people we connect to the schools or people from home to work, the more points we get in the application, which would make us more, you know, possible, you know, to get. It, it's like, it's really tough competition, and, and there were 453 applications in the last cycle. And they only gave out, in the Bay Area, there were only about 10 to 12 projects. Now, because of statewide, so it's, we really are trying to get as many points as we can. And by having a defined route and scope of work, then that should help us.
Okay, thank you. I'm seeing Mr. McCann and Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McMahon and Graham for your input. I just wanted to clarify two quick things with Mr. Wadsworth. One, it's heartening to know that there's more money and that we have another run at it. That's great. And it's also heartening to hear that your thoughts are that the overall application will be greatly strengthened by, by the involvement of, of St. Helena. So we, we aim to make that application as strong as possible. I mentioned in my initial comments that an alignment like this just requires that there be some flexibility to reflect the existing built conditions that are in our community. We're 125-plus years old. And so not everything can be, you know, a perfect class one or, or a class four. And so we will likely have a combination of some locations which might have a class one, and those that will likely be a class two or class three, or as Mr. McMahon said, perhaps even a bike boulevard, which is really just something that has greater signage and graphics and things of that nature to try to traffic, to try to calm traffic. Because my question is, that, is that consistent with your thinking that such an application has a combination of such facilities is reasonable? And then additionally, as we move forward over the next few weeks, working with you and with others, it seems possible to look at a few different alternatives in our sort of embedding process with the idea of yielding a final preferred alternative. So we need not make that decision tonight, but we need to be cognizant that we do need to deliver a choice in, in the very near future. Kind of a long question, sorry.
Yeah. So I, I think to answer one question about, you know, the alignment, I think if the city council agrees on alignment, then we could put that into the application. But it's very difficult to change that in the scope of work. So we'd really like to get a decision by, by your April 26th meeting, so that we can move forward with the application. The bicycle boulevards is an option, and that, what that does, it reduces the speeds, you know, can be reduced truck traffic. The city of Napa has a guideline that, that has good information about bicycle boulevards that has been shared with city staff. So that is an option that, that we can pursue. So I think that really we just need to have a good application that we can sell to the reviewers, and that, you know, we can hopefully get a lot of points and then be successful and beat out the competition.
That, that Bike Boulevard concept, I think, is really exciting to consider how that might look and align. I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Thank you, Graham. Quick question. What, in terms of earning points with the grant, the, the grant gods, what, what types of issues, you know, drove the most points in Napa, in Yountville, in Calistoga? What, what were those issues that, that helped?
So the ATP program has changed over time. So it's, as Napa County has really, I mean, all the agencies in Napa County, the Vine Trail colists have been very successful. I think they were awarded ATP one, two, three, and four. I can't remember exactly, but, you know, the trail, many of the sections in Napa, the section between Napa and Yountville, the current section that the NVTA Board has awarded contingency on funding is also ATP-funded. So, but the, but the state regulations that drive, that have the funding, that drive the criteria for selection have evolved and changed over time. So there's more emphasis on disadvantaged communities. You know, how are they served? How are they benefiting? Also, public health has become more important. So getting people, you know, kids to walk and bike to school, more recreation and greenhouse gas emissions. Now, that one's been around for quite a while, but it's definitely points if we can show what's called the mode shift, or we move people out of their cars and to be more active transportation, walking and biking. But really, I think the most important things that we're looking for is safety. Because really, these, these paths are so much more safe than people riding their bikes on the roads, especially for families with young children. So really, that's, that's one of the biggest benefits we've seen with an Napa Valley Vine Trail. And with COVID, and, you know, people were taking their families out on the, the Vine Trail and getting exercise. And like Chuck said, you know, from 2018 to 2020, the usage went up 50% to half a million people a year in 2020. So we see the advantages, and as more segments are built, you know, between St. Helena and Calistoga, Vallejo is also working on a segment, and so they're hoping to get that one constructed this year or next. So really, these, you know, we're maybe at 12 miles now, and there's adding another eight here and seven there. So really, we're getting, making some real progress on that 47 miles of Vine Trail from Calistoga to Vallejo.
Thank you. I was just wondering, I know we, we've heard a lot about the proximity of the schools, churches, multifamily residential communities, et cetera, here in town, and the importance of trying to link those things as best as we can. And I was just wondering, when I look at the route through Napa or through Yountville, I'm, I'm not seeing that. They're actually outside of the, the core part of the town and don't see those linkages there. So it sounds like you're, you're telling me that the, the requirements are changing and tightening and getting more competitive as years go by.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional council input at this point. Okay, so thank you very much, Mr. Wadsworth. That's really helpful in our understanding. What I'm gonna do now is, if we're not getting any council comment, I think we're, I'm seeing Councilmember Hall. Oh, we have to mute.
Sorry, too, too many buttons. Thank you. Mr. McMahon, would you mind, you, you mentioned some, some rough cost numbers. Would you mind running through what you think the cost might be for the city of St. Helena?
Yes, sure. You know, happy to. And again, just, this is pretty rough. But it is based off of the latest contract that just got, is about to be left to Gelati Brothers. And it, you know, it's a little hard stopping, but it's coming in at about $2 million a mile. So we think that the total project between Yountville and St. Helena is gonna be around $20 million.
Okay.
Of the $20 million, the, the current plan is to ask for $13 million in ATP funding. The city, I mean, the county of Napa has Board of Supervisors at the last go-round committed $4.5 million, and the Vine Trail is committing $3 million. And we, and it is important for every jurisdiction that the Vine Trail goes through, through to also contribute monies, because again, it shows the, more points, that the community is behind it economically, not just enthusiastically. And our thought is that the city of St. Helena put in about $300,000 for, out of the $18 million project between St. Helena and Calistoga for eight tenths of a mile in the county's jurisdiction, in the city's jurisdiction. And we're saying that, you know, if it were proportional to that, for the two miles in the jurisdiction, you should be ready to spend 2.5 times as much. you should be ready to spend two point five times as much. I think, we think that this this route within the city is going to be a little bit less costly, especially if we end up with a bike boulevard on Church Street, because there's very little infrastructure to add there. And there's no bridges that we have to put in over the Napa River, like we have to do up on Dona Wheel Lane and a few other places. So we think that with a contribution of of between three hundred and five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars in that area, with the Vine Trail stepping up at three million or, you know, close to five times as much, that we ought to be able to deliver the project.
And the thought would be that in terms of cash management, the city would fund that out over three years roughly?
Yes, and and those three years would probably not not even start until after we know we got the ATP grant, which will be after the first of this coming year. It'll be in two thousand twenty three, possibly even in the next fiscal year after that, before sizable expenditures have to be made, because, you know, you you spend twenty percent of your money upfront doing the environmental and the engineering and the eighty percent comes two or three years later.
Okay. Thank you. And you you mentioned you thought there might be fifteen million dollars worth of new sales receipts here in the city?
Between, so in in the combined twelve miles between Yountville and St. Helena. And the way I get to that is that the similar twelve twelve miles between Napa and Yountville is generating five hundred thousand uses a year. We know from twelve hundred intercept surveys that thirty percent of those are tourists and seventy percent are locals. We assume that the locals don't spend much incrementally, but the tourists, there's a very good number that says a tourist when they're doing a bicycle vacation, spend between a hundred and two hundred dollars a day. And a hundred dollars a day on thirty percent of five hundred thousand uses is fifteen million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. And I think earlier you might have mentioned, Mr. McMinn, a budget of seventy million, which is substantially higher than our city budget. I I don't know if that was a number that you were thinking was a larger number of the larger Upper Valley section.
I'm not going to, you know your budget. You tell me what it is and divide it by into five hundred thousand. I know, I know you guys are strapped for cash. That's why I think this is a pretty sweet deal.
It's an easy number to remember, Chuck. It looks like yes.
Yes, I know. I I am fully aware of your, of of the city's many, many priorities.
And we are doing okay. You know, we 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 are doing doing well and 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 looking forward to to working together on this. So with that, one of the things I want to say is there, that my understanding is that what we look at is something that would be, in a sense, engineered over the next coming three to four years. So this is not something that's just going to be dropped in with no study and immediately huge volumes of folks riding bicycles on this route. This is something that's going to happen over time as it's designed. And it'll give us as a, as a city and a community, the opportunity to, in a sense, be proactive with how we might look at what a bike boulevard might look like in terms of signage, striping, as we wait for that sort of longer engineering. So there's a timeframe here, too, that I think this will make me perhaps a little bit of a soft landing for whatever we decide on. With that,
That's correct, absolutely correct. And the other, our other piece of that, too, Mr. Bass, sorry to interrupt, would be that we think it's if the Church Street option is chosen for the bike boulevard. We think it's very important that residents of Church Street be included on the design committee that figures out how the, how to do the traffic calming and how to make it an effective bike boulevard.
Okay, thank you. And and so I looked at the council for any additional comment and then we'll go to public comment. I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Just one quick comment. I know you mentioned Mills Lane. There's a family who has expressed their lack of interest in in working with us on on an easement. Do we have, do you feel we have all the easements we need or strong support for the other options?
Yeah, so we we have talked to about, we have talked to the owners between Yountville and St. Helena. The private owners would have to provide easements. We have had positive discussions with seventy eight to eighty percent of the square footage that's required. One of the, one of the specifics, when you take government money, which we will be in this ATP application, is that you cannot sign easement agreements until your SEQA process is done. So while we can have discussions, while we can be moving in the right direction, while we can be showing them engineering designs, it's not until two or three years from now, when SEQA is complete, that we can then actually formally sign easements agreements. And that's the exact same process that we went through between St. Helena and Calistoga. We did not close on the easements between St. Helena and Calistoga until last October, because last September, NVTA adopted the mitigated negative deck on the SEQA analysis.
Okay.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes.
I just would like to add that that Chuck brings up a point. So there will be the design phase, there'll be the environmental phase. And one of the great things that the Vine Trail Coalition has done is that they've talked to these property owners. And they, if if we can show in the application that much of these easements will be friendly acquisitions and, you know, that we're a long way along in the right of way phase, then that will make our application very strong, which is really going to be helpful to us as well, is to have those relationships and those potential offers of dedication. We still have to go through the formal process of, you know, making an actual offer and doing agreements and stuff. But that'll really strengthen our application by having the, you know, the outreach to the property owners.
Okay, thank you. Additional council comments or input before I open public comments? And I'm seeing none, so I'll look to our city clerk and we'll begin our public comment. And we will stick with our three minutes, just to stay in that zone here. Thank you.
Philip, you can unmute yourself and address the council.
Hello, this is Philip Sales speaking. I was the former executive director of the Napa Valley Vine Trail Coalition until December. And I just want to stay a couple of things. I was involved in the other three ATP applications. And I don't really want to sugarcoat this in any way, and I I think you really need to make a decision this evening. There's a lot of work that goes into this grant application, including we have to have Caltrans review right of way that they allow a month for. So if you back that time out of this schedule, you you know, we're in the middle of May trying to wrap this thing up. And I've been working assisting Sean and Chuck on the easement information. Most of this project can be built on the wine train right of way, south of Whitehall Lane, which is a is a great opportunity for us to take advantage of. The current owners have been extremely open to this, and of course, Caltrans were building it on their right of way. But we do need to nail down this route. It's not something that we can leave to the last minute. There's a lot of work that goes into this, so I just want to to emphasize that. And talking, speaking of what Graham said, there are certainly opportunities for tweaking the design at some point, but we can't be submitting something with three or four alternatives. That's just not going to fly. They are looking for projects that they consider to be, I would say, not quite shovel-ready, but defined enough that they can feel confident that we're going to use the money. And as Graham mentioned, the competition for these funds is incredible. It's in the, from the first round of ATP where we were successful, the number of applications every year has gone up. People are hiring consultants to do the work. I mean, there's a lot of, the competition is pretty intense. So we we're really, we're really almost at one minute before midnight here. And I just don't want to, you to sense that there's somehow a lot of flexibility left here. We've got, we've got to, we've got to get this thing moving. So that's my two cents. I really look forward to St. Helena closing this gap and eventually everybody being able to ride down. And and just a reminder, St. Helena is one of the first cities to jump in with some funding to help fund the original Greenway Study, which I was the project manager back in two thousand and seven. So it's, you were one of the people who who got this thing going. So let's try to get it across the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you for the public comments, and I'll I'll just encourage folks to be concise as we move forward. Just in terms of time, we still have another significant item. So I'll look to our city clerk.
Larry, you can unmute yourself and address the council.
Hi, this is Larry Vermellen speaking. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. You know, I use the Fulton Lane, I'm sorry, I use Fulton Railroad Church to Pope back route frequently. And a lot of people do. I was at that intersection at Church and Pope just the other day, and I noticed people coming out of Turley Flats and dodging the cross traffic on Pope Street to get onto Church to go over to Safeway. There are some real problems using Church Street for anything else or restricting the amount of traffic. There is frequently, frequently a backup from the intersection of Pope and Main Street. Westbound traffic frequently backs up and blocks the intersection at Church. And approaching Church Street from Main Street, having made a left or a right turn and heading east, you're coming over the railroad tracks and you have no visibility as you come over the tracks. So now you're proposing to introduce bicyclists into that mix, which is already a dangerous intersection and and often is is struck by gridlock. The City of St. Helena needs more north-south routes, not less. So to take one out of circulation or to restrict it, I think only contributes to the gridlock on Main Street. We were supposed to have gotten a bridge over Oak Avenue and a connection through to Grayson some years ago as part of development on that side of town, and that doesn't seem to be happening. So, you know, the residents are restricted to using Main Street, going around Valley View, or using Railroad and Church or Edwards and Pope to get to the various, their various destinations. The only route that makes sense to me is the railroad tracks. And I think the the Vine Trail folks, you're just going to have to go back and work harder with the with the wine train. That's the obvious route and safest, off the city streets, protected. There's got to be a way to pull that off, and I think you folks need to work harder at it. As a second alternative, it would be Star Avenue and easements through the vineyard up to Fulton. But to take any further, to reduce circulation any further north-south in St. Helena without some other mitigating measures just doesn't make sense to me. I think you're just creating further gridlock. You're going to have bicycles thrown into a into a difficult situation. There's going to be an anger level. And and this is not going to turn out well. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments, and we will move to our next public comment.
Stephanie, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you so much, Cindy. This is Stephanie Yakobachi. I know that's not my timer, but I I am a resident of St. Helena. I want to make sure that the other callers are aware of that. And excuse me for being a little bit redundant, but it's important for me that other people tuned in know that residents have these opinions, not just council asking these things or these questions. Residents see some of these facts and, you know, it's it's been disappointing, some of the feedback on the Vine Trail, which is, I support the Vine Trail, but more or less not in my town, which, for me, feels like affordable housing. I support affordable housing, but not in my backyard. Or I support development, but not in St. Helena. It's, it just seems like a reoccurring statement in St. Helena, and I really think that our town needs, you know, forward progress. I'm a little insensitive to, to the, like, you know, a lot of people I've talked to, it's like, I use Oak Avenue all the time to get around Main Street, you know. I did not grow up in St. Helena. I've been here for over a decade. But I lived in a place that had a lot more traffic, and so I'm okay if it takes me two minutes longer to get somewhere. And if if I'm really concerned about saving two minutes, I probably shouldn't be in my car in the first place. So so for me, like, that 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 argument doesn't make a lot of sense. I just want to urge council. I I am really in favor of the Vine Trail. I'm really in favor of the Oak Avenue route. I think the church route, I think any route, you know, is really great. And I do see the urgency for getting in on this ATP grant. The Vine Trail has been so successful. And the later we do it, the harder it's going to be, and the more money it's going to be, just like the sidewalk project. Look at how much the sidewalks are projected to cost us in comparison to four years ago. You know, the five hundred money, five hundred K the city spends on the Vine Trail, you know, is going to go straight to consultants before the sidewalk project even starts. So so I don't think that that's a side-by-side comparison. And I think the Napa Valley Vine Trail in St. Helena, as a whole continuous trail, is going to be a role model for the state, for the region and other. And I would be so proud as a St. Helena resident for our town to be a part of that. And I think it's really St. Helena, you know, playing the long game in sustainability and getting people out and and promoting a healthy lifestyle. It it's a small sacrifice for a great game. So thank you all for these really valuable questions. I thought, Eric, you asked some really quick questions tonight that provided some good insight to the public. And I appreciate everything you guys have done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to the next public comment, please.
Pam, you can, you could unmute yourself and address the council.
Hi, this is Pam Smithers again. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I was the chair of the ATSC for a couple of years. And before I was the chair, I was on the committee for a few years. So I I have a little more information than maybe the average guy does, the average citizen, about what is a class one, a class two, you know, what are the public benefits, you know, funding, et cetera, et cetera. So through that lens, I just want to say that the Vine Trail is is not just for out-of-towners on the weekends. The Vine Trail is for us. And I hope everyone understands that and believes that, because it's it's really true. Locals will use bikes for local travel if they're given safe routes to do that with. You know, Priya, you had a great chart there, class one, class two, class three. You know, people on the ATSC probably know this like the back of their hands, but class one paths are guaranteed to make people feel safer on bikes. In fact, it's the safest type of bike path you can have on a street with vehicles. Many of our streets in St. Helena are already low volume, but Oak Avenue is not. This is just the place for class one paths like the Vine Trail. Oak Avenue was originally selected as the route of choice by by the Vine Trail and may I just say, by a previous ATSC, not when I was on the committee, but so some years back, you know, maybe eight, I don't, five, eight, for a number of reasons. The Oak Avenue route does not stray too far from the main Vine Trail route. It is a busy vehicle street, which would benefit from a class one path, because it would make it safe for local bicyclists as a mode of transportation. It connects schools, in particular, RLS and St. Helena Elementary, and those are the kids that are going to most likely ride their bikes to school. Just sit on that bench and watch. They're doing it with or without us. So we need to give them some safety, and that, as you've all said, is a a point for the the grants. The Oak Avenue route runs adjacent to businesses, and everyone keeps saying, we need more tourists, we need more tourists. Okay, well, this will give you some tourists on Oak. You know, all those businesses along there would benefit from the exposure. The Oak Avenue route is, I I'm not an engineer, sorry, but I believe it's fairly uncomplicated in terms of engineering as opposed to the church and over Pope and the railroad and turning left through that busy intersection instead of taking the hard right and going up Mitchell and and down Oak. Chuck could probably speak to that better, but I think it's less complicated. And it is already designated as a main bicycle route in our general plan. So it seems like a no-brainer, and I think the Vine Trail recommended this and then had to go to church because of concerns. But I hope you'll, I hope you'll think about Oak again and maybe consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the public comments. We'll look to our next public comment.
Jerome, you can unmute yourself.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So I actually live on Church Street, in the middle of Church Street. And so I've been talking to Jaclyn and Tina and some of the other of my neighbors who actually live on the street. And I I definitely have concerns on it being a mixed commercial residential street. I know that one of the other neighbors down the street who's a chef who has kids, and I'm a pediatrician. I know that one of the other neighbors down the street who's a chef who has kids, and I'm a pediatrician, also have concerns on the busyness of that street and the drop-offs as far as the UPS and FedEx for the businesses. Also, recently, we found out that somebody approached Safeway with a list of signatures that nobody knew about, trying to get them to sign an agreement. So for me, I am concerned. I'm about to close escrow, so I'm going to be a permanent member in Santa Elena. And so I want to know, out of that percentage of people who are for and against, how many of that percentage of people actually live on a block and has been experienced all these changes has actually been for or against this project? Thank you.
Thank you. And as we said, we're in, pouring the questions, and the folks from the Vine Trail will respond after we get through the public comments. So thank you for the comment, and we'll look to additional comments.
Matt, you can unmute yourself.
Good evening, Madam Clerk, Mayor Ellsworth, and members of the City Council. My name is Matt Francois with Rattan and Tucker, and my firm is The Land Use Attorneys for Safeway on this matter. I sent a letter to you yesterday outlining Safeway's significant concerns with an alignment of the Vine Trail that goes down Church Street and would likely encroach on the Safeway site. This, of course, would adversely affect customer and employee parking and traffic circulation and flow. Safeway will not grant any easement for an alignment, which should negate any further discussion or consideration of the alignment. But I think it's also important for you to consider that the Church Street alignment is inconsistent with the general plan, and so legally it cannot be selected. Figure 5.5 of the general plan shows the proposed Vine Trail alignment. This was the alignment vetted by the city through its multi-year planning process and enacted into law just three years ago. No part of the Vine Trail alignment shown on figure 5.5 of the general plan traverses Church Street or is located along the Safeway store site. Ms. Nixon showed you figure 5.4, I'm sorry, 5.5, but she didn't show you the Vine Trail alignment highlighted in brown on that figure. Please ask her to show you that, so you can compare the alignment you previously approved to the ones you're being asked to weigh in on now. Another major concern is CEQA. A public agency must undertake CEQA review prior to approving a project. And with public projects, CEQA prohibits agencies from deciding to proceed with the use of a site for facilities until it has conducted CEQA review. Staff says the city is not legally selecting the Church Street alignment, but at most identifying a preferred or recommended alignment. This seems like a distinction without a difference. Identifying a preferred alignment is a selecting it. It forecloses the consideration of alternatives and mitigation before CEQA review, and that's exactly what CEQA forbids. It appears that the NVTA is the lead agency for the Vine Trail. As you know, that's a joint powers agency made up of the city of Santa Helena and other nearby local agencies. The city hired BKF to study various alignments, sharing the costs with the coalition. So the city appears to be more involved here than would otherwise be the case if it were just a responsible agency. Some questions I would have for staff, if I were in your shoes on this matter. Why are you being asked to weigh in on an alignment that conflicts with the general plan? Why are you being asked to weigh in on an alignment before doing CEQA review? If the coalition needs an alignment for grant funding purposes, why can't it use the alignment you approved in your 2019 general plan or the gap alignment proposed by the Active Transportation and Parks and Recreation Commissions? In closing, thank you for your consideration of Safeway's concerns with respect to the Church Street alignment. We urge you to affirm the Vine Trail alignment in your general plan until you go through the process of amending it, which, of course, you can do. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you for the comments, and we will then look for additional public comment.
Kara, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. My name is Kara Burner, and I am the Executive Director of the Napa County Bicycle Coalition. We submitted detailed comments in support of the Church Street alignment, because this alignment will not only be embraced by the most people, but we believe it will do the most good for the most people, while also supporting the city of Santa Helena's goals related to safety, public health, and responding to climate change. And we do see that it is consistent with the general plan, especially after reviewing the city of Santa Helena's staff comments in response to the Safeway's attorney. Church Street is designated currently in the plan as a downtown mixed-use street. That means that it supports all travel modes, but it has specific design features that promote livable streets and include things like sidewalks, traffic calming features, and bicycle boulevards. A bicycle boulevard, as I understand, is the most currently, how do I say that? It's what's being proposed in the most recent iteration of the Church Street alignment. And a livable street is something that facilitates active social public space by improving the public realm and involves things like lowering speed limits and improving bicycle pedestrian and other non-vehicle user safety. So Church Street in this general plan was not meant to be strictly a residential space, but a space that serves the public good. And a Church Street Vine Trail alignment would not change the intention of the street. It would only realize its intended use with the city already decided is best for the people of Santa Helena. We also support this alignment because it benefits residents and tourists alike and recreational and active transportation users alike. An alignment that goes through the city center will be not just for those who want it, but those who need it. Low-income people are about twice as likely to rely on bicycles for transportation. And with all of the disruptions that we've been through in recent years, as well as the current price of gas, a Church Street alignment will establish a reliable form of transportation that will not only have positive impacts on the environment and health of residents, it may also be a necessary and essential transportation quarter for a growing number of people. So we ask that you vote in support of the Church Street alignment, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments. Additional public comment?
Natalie, you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Matei. I'm Director of Real Estate for Safeway. Safeway supports the general concept of the 47-mile Vine Trail. Safeway will not be supporting, however, any proposal of the Vine Trail running along the westerly frontage of the Safeway Shopping Center and/or any changes to two-way traffic on Church Street. Safeway declines to grant any easement as it endangers our entitlements and ability to operate. Among other things, the shopping center's site utilities, especially water and sanitary sewer, run along the property line with the railroad tracks and hunt. We have zero ability to disrupt these utilities and lose customer and employee parking. Regarding Church Street, a high percentage of Safeway's customers on the east side of town access the shopping center via church. Regarding truck deliveries, Safeway has seven-day delivery, which means we deliver each day. We primarily utilize Main and Hunt to access the shopping center. When Main and Hunt are closed, for example, for special events, or when Hunt was closed during COVID, Safeway's trucks are forced to reroute and use Church Street. This has occurred for decades. If Main, Hunt, and Church are closed through traffic, the Safeway grocery store is endangered. Safeway is effectively being asked to, quote, "take one for the team here" and accept the significant impacts the Church Street plan would have on Santa Helena's only full-service grocery store and its union jobs. Safeway declines to do so. We strongly encourage the city to consider our legal counsel's letter and public comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for the public comment, and we will move forward and look for additional public comments.
Ann, you can unmute yourself and address the council.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Kim Finney, and since we're giving credentials before we speak, I'm a 25-year resident and have been involved since day one, owning property, businesses, raising my children here, going to church here, and being an active commissioner on parks and recs for two terms, then going to the grand jury in Napa County. Chuck, I'm addressing you because I went through the proper channels and wrote a letter to the City Council, in fact, too. And you said tonight that the naysayers and public comment were to be taken with a grain of salt, impassioned people who fear the unknown. Totally offensive as a community member that likes to be involved, that has been for growth and thriving since day one. That bully tactic is exactly what you're using tonight with deadlines and grant funding. And you, as a council, I urge you all, before making a decision tonight, $200,000 here, $300,000 here, is a lot when you are floating a bond on the June ballot, because we can't even afford our own water. Please do not be bullied into this decision. Please listen to those naysayers, because they are greatly, greatly impacted. And if you take the exact wording from Ethan Walsh in the Picasso comments prior to this, parking impact, noise, traffic, maintenance, short-term use, non-residential in nature, this is huge and not to be taken lightly. And again, I take huge offense to your telling us to be taken with a grain of salt. It's insulting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the public comment, and we'll look to the city clerk for additional public comment.
Jim, you can unmute yourself and address the council.
Good evening. My name is Jim Gamble, and I'm the owner of 1250 Church Street, which is at the corner of Church and Hunt Street. And Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for facilitating this good conversation tonight. Just real quickly, you know, it's never fun to be opposite your neighbors here on Church Street, but just speaking for our building, my building here on the corner of Church and Hunt, we have 10 off-street parking spots here. We have a lot of cars coming in and out of our parking a lot every day. And it's hazardous pulling in and out of Church Street. The cars are zipping up and down, up and down the street. I'm a big supporter of the Vine Trail. I'm a big supporter of the Vine Trail in front of my business here on Church Street. I'll speak for just my property. I only see positives. The traffic calming measures that we're talking about are going to slow cars down and make the street much safer and much more enjoyable place to be. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments, and we'll move to additional public comment.
The person TL, you can unmute yourself.
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, all of you. This is Tony Leonardini, business owner here, landowner here, kids in school here, ride my bike all the time. And I actually want to say, I was the only one to ride my bike to the college when they actually had one of their, I won't say hearings, but I brought my kids. I was the only one to ride my bike. But I've been promoting the Stop and Shop or the Gap, and which was recommended to you by hundreds of citizens, Transportation Board, and the Rec Department. And this is what we all want. This is what we've all recommended at this time, which is the best for us. You know, Chuck said, there is the fear of the unknown. I live here. I work here. I own a business here. Other people do. We know the unknown, and we know the impact this is going to have. Voting on this with zero CEQA, zero traffic studies, we have 125-year-old roads, 125-year-old infrastructure. We know we have to do work. Our business district is old and needs upgrading. You're trying to pass a bond right now because of economic shortfalls, and now you're adding more to our expenses? I ask you guys to answer this question. When this is done, why are you adding more expenses to all of us? You are, I heard Safeway, I heard a lawyer talk, you're looking at another lawsuit, if not several. Please answer how you're going to approach this. How are we going to financially take care of this? I ask you, please, to listen to the citizens of our community. This is not a pass by a lake, as they say. This is not Vallejo, as Chuck has said in multiple Zooms and multiple meetings. This is not an open space. It's a narrow, historic, busy downtown city. I please ask each of you to tell us how you are going to financially approach this. And how does this serve a local community? The kids in my community, I live in the Sylvander neighborhood. We travel east-west. This trail is north-south. I ask you, please, please tell me how this will help my family and my children who go to Santa Elena Montessori. Like a lot of kids in the Sylvander neighborhood, we travel east-west. Please tell me how that 70%, like Chuck says, of our community is going to use this. Please tell me how this will help us. Once again, the Parks and Recs transportation recommended the Stop and Shop and the Gap. And I please ask you to listen to the citizens and the community that have been voted in place and appointed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the public comments. And we'll continue with public comment.
Nancy, you can unmute yourself and address the council.
Hi again, good evening. The gap thing that's been mentioned, I'm not sure why we're calling it a gap, because actually on the Vine Trail website, on page 160 to 161, third paragraph down, I'm reading off the site. It says, "The network includes a series of Class III pathways designated for shared use of vehicles and bicycles. Some of these pathways have an additional designation for use as bicycle boulevards. Key Class III pathways include Chi Lane, Pratt Avenue, and State Route 29 between Pratt and Grayson Avenue." Why on earth, if we already have a paved highway Route 29 running through that connects south to north that is classified Class III pathway, would you not use that? So I'm not sure why anybody in their right mind would even give a second thought to Church Street, for one. That's a nightmare. Every holiday season, it's a nightmare. I live in, on Hunt Avenue, it's a congested mess over there, and you're only going to push traffic over one more street, and everybody else has told you all the other things wrong with it. So besides the fact that on your own website, it says that State Route 29 between Pratt and Grayson are actually Class III pathways, there's another area on the west side of town that's already marked for bicycling that involves Sulphur Springs, South Crane, over to Valley View, with big, wide, nice roads that people ride their bikes over there all the time. And if you're looking, you know, just for a thorough way, north to south, that's another option. But I want to really encourage you guys to embrace the Class III between Pratt and, I mean, yeah, Pratt and Grayson. And just as, by the way, the Golden Gate Bridge doesn't abut anybody's private property. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you for the public comments, and we'll move to the next public comment, please.
Mark, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Mark Smithers here. I guess my first comment, well, I'm a big supporter of Oak Street, quite frankly, because it connects, you know, the schools and I think the economic impact would be more significant to the downtown businesses if we used Oak Street. But if we go back to, you know, the Vine Trail group and the Napa Bike Coalition and others, before this whole thing became politicized, they suggested Oak Street was the right way to do it. And so I think we ought to, you know, remember that, that before we got into these debates, you know, and the credentials of various people and whatnot. But I want to clarify a couple of things, because there have been some people that are all concerned about the funding of the Vine Trail through Santa Elena. And I want to remind everybody that the Measure T money that Santa Elena is receiving requires us to spend a certain amount of money on Class One bike lanes. So that is where we're going to pay for the Class One bike lane Vine Trail extension or connection, you know, from the Yountville South or connection, you know, from the Yountville south of Santa Elena to, you know, through town and whatnot. So that is where the money is coming from. There aren't going to be extra monies taken out of the general fund, et cetera, et cetera. It's already designated, it's already required. So it would be great for somebody to speak to that from the city. I want to also remind everybody that on page 5-16 of the general plan, it provides that there's supposed to be a street connector at some point in time. And I think Larry spoke to this earlier, from Oak, you know, from Grayson to Oaks, you know, to Mitchell on Oak Street. That's supposed to be connected at some point in time when there is some development there. So again, that sort of speaks to Oak Street is the right place to be because in the future, you're going to have this connection to Grayson and that also helps the kids safely get from the high school, you know, to downtown, which they do on a regular basis. They don't have to be on Main Street. So again, that's in the general plan. And on page, you know, 5-25, you know, Oak, you know, from Mitchell to Madrone is set up and shown on the map as a bike boulevard. And bike boulevards, which have been discussed, you know, to slow down the traffic. So again, it's saying Oak Street is the place where the bikes are supposed to be. You know, there are some folks that have been rather vocal about losing parking spaces. But some of those businesses have to look at themselves and say, what parking spaces have they consumed, you know, in their own areas by putting, you know, blockades over their, you know, parking spaces, both in the shopping centers and at the postal delivery places? So anyway, I think you really need to go with Oak Street.
Thank you for the comments. And we'll look for additional public comments.
Anne Marie, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you and good evening to Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Anne Marie Ridgway and I'm a St. Helena resident. I've been living here for 10 years. And I actually moved here because it was a nice, small, little country town where there was plenty of parking. My children, I have five children, we have, we go to lots of different schools here. And I don't think I need to address the Church Street because I believe Mr. Francois did an excellent job, basically saying that's not a great idea just because of the lawsuits. But in regards to Oak Avenue, any of us that live here and have kids that go to school here and use businesses like Chocolaté and the local businesses there, I just don't know how you're going to do it because it's already a mess. There's deliveries all day, people are parking to pick up kids. Most kids don't ride their bikes. I hate to tell you, but it's a lovely idea to think that they do, but they don't. They want to walk, their parents pick them up. We go to take them for ice cream. It's just not what we do. So I'd like to echo Mr. Leonidi's comments and Ms. Finney's comments. And I fully support the Gap alignment. I live in Segment 3 and we also have some concerns. I've been chatting with some of our neighbors and just, I'd like Mr. McMinn to address safety and crime. I know a large section of the Napa Valley Vine Trail in Napa is home to the Napa Bowl Homeless Encampment. And that's been the case for a few years now and it's hard in California to get rid of homeless people. What is it that you're going to do to ensure that we don't have homeless encampments in St. Helena? So thank you for the opportunity to speak and that's it.
Thank you for the comments and we'll look to additional public comments.
Chris, you can unmute yourself.
Hello?
Oops, I'm sorry.
Oh, I think this is Annette.
Oh, okay, got them mixed up. Sorry, sorry. Okay, I, I've spoken out a lot. You know, I'm a third-generation St. Helenan with the fourth and fifth grade, the fourth and fifth generations living here as well. I'm not opposed to change at all. I'm in concept support of the Vine Trail. My kids can't wait for it to go from Santa Elena to Yountville because they work in Yountville, so they're all hung go. What I am opposed to is putting it on Oak Street if it requires the loss of those 50 parking spots. You know, Chuck, I, I'm annoyed that you said that those of us who are passionate and naysayers have that fear of the unknown. I don't have a fear of the unknown. I do have a fear that if you take all that parking off of Oak Avenue, Chocolaté and Design Four will go out of business. They rely on those parking spots. It's just not the spot in front of them. Those spots turn over every 20 minutes, even though it's marked like three-hour parking and such. I don't think they can sustain their businesses unless that parking is there for them. They are my tenants and they have asked me to speak out because they are fearful that their businesses will close. Then you're putting seven local, hard-working families out of business because there is no parking. Those kids you see coming down from the RLS, they're coming to Chocolaté for ice cream. They're not just using the Vine Trail. They want ice cream and they can sit outside or inside and he welcomes them there. So I am thoroughly opposed to the Oak Street, Adams Street option. I know for your grant, it might look good that you're connecting all those churches. But for those of us who do attend church there, then we've lost all of our parking. I know there's a big funeral tomorrow. That street will be filled, as will the Catholic school parking lot. But that isn't enough. For the Catholic Church, we need both sides of Oak Street for the parking, not only on Sunday, but for all the other events that go there. So while you might use those churches to get your money, the people who would actually need parking to get to church will not be able to park there, whether there's bicyclists or not on that street. I totally support, I don't think it's a gap either, but we're calling it fondly, the Stop and Shop. There's no reason why the short blocks that, from perhaps Mitchell or up to Pratt, whatever that is, to get through the business district, why can't that little short segment be a share of the road? So that parking is not taken away. I talk too much, but thank you very much. I'm opposed to Oak Street.
Thank you for the public comment. We'll look for additional public comment.
Chris, you can unmute yourself and address the council.
Hello, this is Chris Blanchard. I live on Church Street, right before Pope. I lived there with my two daughters to go to Santa Elena Montessori and my wife. And I was kind of bummed out. I'm one of those passionate, or as Chuck says, one of those passionate but not crazy residents. I'm very proud to be passionate about it. I don't really like to be told that you're thinking about us with a grain of salt and everything. But the other comment is we have a fear of unknown because there's really been no clear details presented. I just found out about this probably two months ago or so through the community. I really kind of surprised to hear this and I became pretty passionate about it and wrote a bunch of letters, as you've probably seen. We're not really happy with it because it's never before been done in any neighborhoods throughout Napa. There really hasn't been any studies on it. It doesn't affect the streets in our town here, St. Helena. You know, like, there's no details on anything. I really kind of unnerved that all of a sudden this is being rushed on everyone. I mean, I like the idea of the Vine Trail, you know, it's a nice idea, but just not through our neighborhood streets without any sort of real studies being done or community involvement. You know, I've met with Chuck a couple of times to go over a few things, but it's being rushed, you know, and I'm not really happy about that. And I would urge the council to either wait on the vote or until some more studies have been done or do a little bit more research. I mean, we're really concerned here on this street. It's a small street and yes, we have cars going up and down. My kids playing on this, you know, in the neighborhood here. We're concerned about the security. We're concerned about the safety and particularly maintenance. You know, who's going to maintain the trail once it's in? There's a number of issues that every, I would say, most people on our street that haven't been answered yet. So I would urge you guys to wait and listen to more of our passionate and not crazy people on Church Street and throughout St. Helena Town. Thank you.
Thank you for the public comment and I think it's clear from public comment. You know, we just really have to, the sensitivity of our language and, you know, we're pleased to have guests here from the Vine Trail. But if, you know, the sensitivity in language, I think is very important. Also, just to respond to a couple of the earlier speakers, to make sure the comments are directed to the council and not to other speakers. So I'll look to the city clerk. I think we just have a little bit more public comment. We're only going to allow speakers to speak once. We have a tight timeline and we're going to need to also discuss holding the meeting open past our nine o'clock. Cindy, is that a vote we should take now? Or should we take one more public comment?
No, you can now.
Okay, I'd like to propose we add another half hour to the meeting from nine o'clock. Is there support for such?
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Anna.
All right.
Okay, Councilor Rosito.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Mayor Alfred.
Yes. So we'll move forward and we have a bit of public comment left. So if we can take that, please.
Deacon Ellsley, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Deacon Whitman and I too live on Church Street, 1135, which is a few houses up. The reason we moved to Santa Elena was to retire. So my wife and I, you know, we came here, we loved this historic town. We loved everything about it. And we decided, you know, we would buy a house in the community, do a renovation, remodel and retire here. And having said that, we have no desire to have this Vine Trail run right through the front yard. And part of the issue for us is that, you know, everybody has their own opinion as to how they want to live their life and the way they want their life to look as they reflect back on what they've done. And we're passionate about that because we don't, at this point in life, we don't want to have a bunch of people running back and forth on bikes and bikes right across the front of the house when we're trying to sit back and enjoy life. Number one, number two, if you look at the overall amount of people that are on this street, there's, you know, three businesses, there's, you know, a few houses, two of them are everybody abusing. You have a handful of neighbors. Well, I think you've heard from the majority or quite a few of the neighbors that we are against this Vine Trail on Church Street. I'm not opposed to the Vine Trail at all. I would use it myself, but I don't want it running right through my front yard in my neighborhood. Oak Street, sure, the Gap option, sure, anything else, but then running through my front yard. So I've got to say, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for the comments and additional public comment.
Annette, you've already given public comment. So I'm going to go ahead and lower your hand. And Marion, you're going to be able to address the council.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Marion, double the M, members of the council. I want to emphasize a mayor comment Ellsworth just made and started the session with today regarding the use of respectful language. You've already heard from several residents, the offense that they take to this language, as do I. My husband and I drafted a very impassioned letter last night describing the concerns that we have about the Vine Trail bordering our homes. I echo comments I've heard so far from Ms. Finney and Ms. Ridgway, and I apologize as I'm forgetting other names. But I would like to ask you to please take us seriously. We're not just naysayers to be ignored. We love this town. We're passionate about living here. We give to this community. We're proud to call it our home. And we're not necessarily saying that we're against the Vine Trail. We are asking you to spend the right amount of time, as we are asking you, rather as the residents of this town, to please, we're imploring that you understand that while we want this trail to be successful and to be used, if we are to be the users of it, please take our input into consideration. Take our safety into consideration. Take the safety, not just as some studies have shown, but what we are observing in our city and as you are observing it as well. I support the Gap option. I won't go over the details as I'm sure you all know about it. But please, please, you know, with all due respect to everybody on this call, including people who have offended us, I would like to ask you to please hear our voices. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. And I see that we have additional public comments.
Jody, you can mute yourself.
Yeah, hi. Jody Neiman, 1127 Church Street. I'd just like to echo everyone on our street that has spoken up about not wanting all the extra people and everybody in our front yards and the studies that haven't been done. And the intersection of Pope and Main is another issue someone else brought up. I'm concerned about all those and it's really quiet in the evenings and weekends here now. Believe it or not, it's very busy during the day, but it slows down at night and I enjoy the quiet evenings. And vote no for the Vine Trail on Church Street. Thanks.
Thank you for the comments. And I'll look to the city, I'm seeing no additional public comment at this point. I'll look to the clerk to confirm.
There.
So.
There is one. Oh.
Okay, I'm seeing.
I see people raising a hand and lowering it.
Okay.
So I'm looking and I don't see any raised hands.
Okay, so we'll close the public comment. I see them coming on and then dropping. So I'm going to close the public comments, bring it back to the council and the city manager here to get into a bit of a discussion. You know, we've got the ATSC has presented the Gap option. We've heard from the Vine Trail with some clarification on what they think they need for grant funding. I'm going to look to the city manager first and then look for city council hands with input. Mr. McCann, in terms of organizing thoughts, I wanted to go through the council thought process first. And then if there's some time, we can circle back with the Vine Trail. But we do have another item this evening. So I wanted to get your thoughts on forward movement here.
Sure, thank you very much. And I want to thank all of the residents who have taken their time to offer comments tonight verbally, as well as the literally hundreds of folks who've offered their comments through different electronic forums, including the many communications that we've received tonight. Those all be part of our record and they are all information the city council receives. So they're well aware of those concerns. I'll just circle back to the comments that I started with. We're not looking tonight for a, for precision on the exact details of alignments. We're looking for that overall alignment from the southern part of the community to the northern part. Our advisory committee has provided recommendations. Then you can see that they have different points of view on different segments, including, you know, coming in and utilizing Oak Avenue leading to Adams and then upwards. What I take away from the conversation and the input is that there are some folks who are opposed, but many see the value and can support the project. But it's, like many things, it's the details. It's the actual method of construction, whether it's a Class I or Class II or Class III. And then also some of the mitigation that would go in to the actual facility. We asked Mr. Ellsworth early on if we can have the time to work on those details and then return with a decision. I understood him to say yes, but we have to be very deliberate about that. The decision needs to be in alignment with sufficient detail at the end so that we can have a competitive application. I think we've got several alternatives to look at. I think they would benefit mightily from sitting down with the stakeholders in those various segments to say, we're thinking about a Class III. to say, we're thinking about a class three in this location that would have certain types of improvements to offset issues and to provide the traffic calming necessary. And we can hear about support or concern for modification of parking. And we can bring that back to the council at a future meeting. So I think from you all, a general higher level indication of preferred alignment with the details to come is really what we are hoping to receive. Let me just make one other comment. I appreciate the sensitivity and the clarity of objection that we've heard from the folks from Safeway. I'll note that the plans that we have been looking at, the alignment that we have suggested, do not, do not require or rely upon acquisition of property or use of private property on the Safeway site. So that should just be clear. Certainly, the effect that any change has on circulation is something that they will still have some concern about and some discussion will have to occur. Relative to general plan amendments. If we deviate from our adopted plan, there'll be some action necessary, and that's part of the subsequent action that we expect to take once we have a sense of alignment and facility type. So there's more, more for us to do. And the input tonight's been very helpful. I hope that helps to clarify the actual requests where we have a view though.
Thank you. I'm going to look to our council to see if we have any comment from council. I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. Well, I'm happy to start the discussion. And I'd like to put it in the larger context, which I think has been reflected in at least some of the comments we've heard this evening. Circulation in San Elena is a challenging subject generally. We have for decades really failed to look forward and, and be proactive in many ways in improving circulation at various junctures. There has been a reluctance on the part of the council to embrace circulation improvements and, and as traffic volumes on Highway 29 have increased steadily over the decades, the consequences for residents have increased. And, and I think we're seeing some of that north-south circulation challenge reflected in the comments we've received this evening. And that prompts me really to think that route selection for the vine trail really will go best if we make it with the larger circulation challenges of the city in mind. But there's no conflict-free option for us. That's part of what makes us so difficult. Safeway as a business and its particular operations, I think are a perfect illustration of our circulation dilemmas. There is no great way to route truck traffic to Safeway. We all know it. And as has been pointed out to us this evening, each and every time we close a street for events seasonally as we have and, and for other purposes, from time to time, we use it a lot during the pandemic to help support our local businesses on Main Street. Every time we do that, the only viable route for trucks to Safeway is down into Church or Edwards, and I'm not sure how viable Edwards is. I don't have a good sense of of what the turning movements are like when they get to Hunt. So I don't see how we can really think about Church Street for circulation purposes without thinking about Hunt. And it hasn't come up this evening, but my experience as a cyclist, and I'll confess, I've neglected my bicycle for many years, but I used to ride a lot and of all the things that I really found challenging, difficult and scary, it was sharing narrow roads with large trucks. So you know, that, that's something I have in mind. Oak Street is a key part of our traffic circulation, as has been pointed out, the extension of Oak down to Grayson is contemplated in the general plan. A lot of good things can come from that. Although again, there has been real resistance in the past to implementing it. In a lot of ways, Oak makes more sense to me for the vine trail in the larger picture. But again, we have the immediate and I think very real conflict with the parking challenge for the businesses on Oak. What I understand from the staff report and presentations this evening is that what's being asked of us is to identify a route for consideration, knowing that whatever direction we give will lead to further scrutiny of the details, that there will necessarily be much to be worked out. And I don't really find any way to reach a conclusion of my own on what to recommend simply by sifting through the voluminous public comments that we've received and writing in person, because they really do seem very broadly distributed in terms of what's favored, what's opposed and where. So that's, that's a point of beginning for me, but I really I think it's a choice between Church or Oak. I don't think either is perfect, and I'm not sure which is more problematic.
Thank you. I'm seeing Mr. McCann, City Manager McCann.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to pick up on one point, I think Councilmember Hardy's comment is very good. And you are correct that the, that there will be more work in this approach once council can identify that route. And so you touched on Oak indicating the conundrum with parking. The present, at the present time, our general plan calls for Oak to be either a class three or a bike boulevard, but essentially sharing the road so that parking would remain and bicycles, bicycles would be invited. And so that is the kind of matter that we would look at. Is it appropriate to retain that designation to perhaps look at the super graphics and the other types of embellishments that would make, convert that to a more amenable and obvious bicycle facilities, so to enhance the pedestrian and bicycle capabilities while at the same time retaining on-street parking. So that's the kind of details that we would look at and return to you all with, in that particular case, a potential recommendation that we retain the parking, we designate it as a class three or a bike boulevard, we identify appropriate types of improvements. And in one regard, it's a win-win. Those, all of those needs are met. The disadvantage, as Mr. McMinn or Mr. Wadsworth would indicate is, well, that's not as beautiful or as strong as a class one, a separated pathway. But that's where the balance and the reality of trying to weave this into a built community comes into play. And that's what I'm suggesting, that if you can identify that alignment, we can do some of the work with the stakeholders to try to figure out which of the choices might be most agreeable, or perhaps the other way, the least disagreeable, so that we can find a solution that can work for most of us. And we'll bring that back to you for your decisions so that we can meet the deadline and try to move things forward.
Thank you. I see Vice Mayor Doring, but I want to jump in. We have an issue with our, our last item where we're going to need to have a little time with that. I'm going to want to get the vice mayor's thoughts here. But figuring out that we might be able to move this item and get it. It's going to take obviously some more work, but get this moved to a step forward. I'm going to look to the vice mayor here.
What are you looking for?
Oh, I, well, you had your hand up and, and if you had commentary.
Well, I'd like to stay on the subject that we're on right now. I think if we don't get to that other item, we don't get to it. We'll postpone it. Have a special count. I, I just wanted to follow up on interim city manager's comments because I think they're very good. It's first of all, thank you all, the public members for civilly and productively adding to the mix here. All the comments are good. At some point, it would be good for the vine trail representatives, Mr. McMinn, to have an opportunity to address each of the comments, probably not tonight, but maybe it written for to the city council, that would be very helpful. I would, my thinking is with all of the, is what has been said, sort of the class three and the bike boulevard concepts are making more sense to me. Especially has that, as that has been further explained by our city manager. It is not the best option, but I would also add this, rather than seeing it as a binary, binary choice between Oak and Church. I would also offer that it may be to our advantage to have those as one option. One option so that the burden is not on the east side or the west side. But really dig in on the bike boulevard concept and really, really focus on what can we do to enhance these two neighborhoods beyond what they expect. I do think there is a fear of the unknown and that's okay, because I would have the same concerns without the details. But I'm thinking about coming into town and having boulevards on both sides of the street, but we really need to spend a lot of time on the traffic calming. We need to be able to maybe, for example, show that on Church Street, there won't be any truck traffic on your street. That's the compromise we made. And I think Councilmember Hardy is correct to point to Hunt. And maybe that becomes not something that we can close anymore. It may not, it may be problematic. So that, that's the kind of direction I'm focusing in on. I did see some mixed messages there from Mr. Wadsworth and Mr. McMinn and Mr. Sales in terms of the urgency. And I want to be cognizant of that. I do think we can come back in short order, but I would like to focus more on what a bike boulevard really means to our city. Like to get that information from the city of Napa that was offered. And maybe focus our direction there rather than having to choose one or the other. I'm not in favor of removing any parking on Oak Avenue for sure, but I am in favor of something that utilizes that. And maybe one day Oak will be extended south and we'll have a bridge there and that will be the long-term solution long after I die. I don't know. But I mean, that is really the best case scenario, but that's not on the table right now. That's where I am. I really want to take a break, but I'll wait for a few minutes. I have been on the road and I've been in this meeting now for three and a half hours, but we'll plod forward.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for those comments. I see Councilmember Shito.
Thank you. It is such a hard thing because of the conflict and having no perfect area. And I am leaning towards having it be the Church Street alternate because knowing having explored before down the Oak Avenue, there was so much loss of parking and we weren't able to add any back. Not even on Oak Avenue, but also getting there. And on those streets, it was either by sunshine or it was along the businesses and we had to lose the parking all along and then turning on Adams as well. There was such a significant amount of parking that was so tight in that area. I was thinking on this, we, that that wasn't an option at this point, since we weren't able to actually offer some real solutions and give back parking. So Church Street, it's painful to say because I know there are impacts for residents there. I think it's 11 residential, residential homes and then the three businesses. We heard one, one support of it. I was hoping that more would support this bike boulevard concept, which I was thinking is an option that at least adds some benefit backs to that street because it is all about traffic calming and making sure that we are not just adding the bikes. It's also, hopefully, the goal is to reduce the traffic that's on the street. So we're giving something back. And I support moving forward with that. So we're clear. And we stopped spending money and having these painful discussions, I think, where there's all of these different options and we're revisiting the information that we've already heard. Knowing that it is such a big benefit for our community overall. So to be clear, my support is on Church Street with the boulevard, with the residents weighing in on what the traffic calming will be as we take the time to look through those designs and have it be with the residents. And I think we're well.
Why would you dismiss, why would you dismiss Oak Avenue as a bicycle boulevard?
Because I still think we need to lose the parking getting there. On, so the streets to connect over to Oak Avenue, we still lose a significant amount of parking and then also to get back to the vine trail on Adams. Also, I've heard the school, there were different school district concerns. I don't know if that has changed. But I remember hearing public comment and a lot of people being concerned with the buses and the school district not wanting to move where the buses pull in. And so that is another problem.
Mr. McCann, I believe, explained that with a bicycle boulevard, that there would not be a loss of parking. That would be the only way I would accept something like that on Oak Avenue. Maybe I misunderstood what he said.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Yes, a bicycle boulevard need not remove parking. Now, there may be some areas to Councilmember Shito's thoughts that may have some, some limited conflict, you know, on a turning movement or something. I, I don't know that, that level of detail. But overall, the thought would be that parking would be retained on the Oak Avenue segment if, if one was to pursue a bike boulevard. If you pursue other classes, whether it's a class one or a class four, then that does require the removal of parking in order to either have the separation or the, the physical barriers. But an option would be to approach it as the general plan has suggested, which is a class three or a bicycle boulevard.
Thank you. And I, Councilmember Hall, do you have any input here?
Thank you. I just, you know, it's very difficult for, for everybody. And I was just thinking about priorities, right? And for me, we, we all have our, our list of priorities. I think the council has struggled with, with setting and sticking to priorities and, and at the end of the day, I think it just comes down to to dollars. But I, when I look at this, and I spent a lot, a lot of time on the phone last week with the mayor to our south. And I was trying to remind him that financially, our cities are in very, very different places. You know, he's, he's got finished streets and you know, bright red curbs and plenty of paint and the place looks great. Easy to walk around. It's doing, it's doing well. We're, we're struggling to keep water coming out of the tap. And so what I think, if we have $1 to spend, where does it go? You know, do I want to paint a green pathway on the street or do I want to fix a water pipe? I'm always going to opt to fix a water pipe unless we can figure out some of the way to do it. The water pipe impacts us here specifically. I think the vine trail does too. It's definitely a, a, you know, it's a, it's a great idea. It's a terrific concept. It's a regional project. And I like all that about it. So it's very difficult to figure out any clear decision here tonight. So I've been thinking, well, if we put off a vote tonight, what is it we really need? What do we need to come back to? And is that clear in any of our minds? I think there's some, some difference in, in timing. That Lester mentioned that I'd like to understand. Graham, maybe you can contribute there a little bit. How much time do we have? The other thing is The other thing is, you know, what are the specific criteria we need to understand which route is best? You know, we've been told for months that we're going to lose a lot of parking on Oak, and tonight it sounds like, well, maybe that's not the case after all. So those are significant changes in the 11th and a half hour that I think are a little problematic to this whole process. It's not been clear throughout. What is it we're actually trying to decide? What do we as a council need to consider? And it would be great. What does the application look like? What are the other applications that have been submitted that have been successful? How much information on what do we actually need to provide to get the dollars we need? What's the minimum? I don't mean, what's a slam dunk for the Vine Trail? I mean, what's the minimum that we need to do to make a decision? And if we feel as a group, we can add something more to be more successful, because we come up with a good creative idea, then great. It's up to us to add it in. Those are the things that are all problematic for me. It's still a big gray area. When I look at the survey, which is problematic in and of itself, you know, 40% of the respondents are not in our town. But yet, 70 to 75% of the users of this are going to be us locally here. So that's a problem all by itself. You know, question four really breaks down, are your thumbs up or thumbs down on any of these different routes? And if you do the math, believe it or not, the Mills Lane is the top thumbs up vote by 62%. And it was the bottom vote for the ATSC and PRC, and I serve on the PRC. So, you know, all this does is tell me that there's no clear agreement anywhere in town on this topic, if all the rest of the commentary hasn't been clear enough. You know, when almost 40% of everybody says, none of these options are good for me, that means the majority of the folks are going to be ticked off with whatever we come up with. So I don't think we're there yet in terms of clarity. I think we need some time. We don't have a lot of time. We need some time. How much? I don't know. And we need to be crystal clear on what is it we need to decide to be able to be successful. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Chuck, I see your hand. I'm just going to make a quick comment here. In terms of the grant too, and it was recognized, I think there was over 400 applications and 10 were given out. So if we were to apply and not get the grant, there's that perhaps outcome too. So let me give it to Chuck for a moment, and if we can be brief at this point, just to sort of see where we are.
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. I think just to Eric's, or Councilmember Hall's question, I think the minimum that we need is what we described in our last memo on the, that says a Class One up until Pope, a Class One from Pope to Church, a Bike Boulevard from Church to Hunt, and a Class One from there to Pratt and Main Street to the other connection. And I just want to clarify one thing too. A Bike Boulevard is different from a Class Three. A Class Three is just put up the signs, just put the sharrow on the street, and it's normally put on a low-volume street. A Bike Boulevard says, we're going to guarantee that it's a low-volume street. This according to NACTO standards, the National Association of City Transportation Organizations, that says a Bike Boulevard will have speed limits of 20 miles an hour or less, and average daily volumes of cars of 1,500 cars or less. And we would be happy with a Bike Boulevard on Oak if those two conditions were met. But to just put up a sharrow sign, a sharrow and share the road on either Oak or Church wouldn't score well enough in the ATP cycle. So I think the Bike Boulevard is that priority goes to bicyclists and pedestrians on this corridor. And either one would be fine, but I think it's a significant step to say that one would put a Bike Boulevard on Oak Street all the way from Mitchell to Adams. And then there's the question of how do you get from Adams and Oak over to the railroad right away again? And do we need a Bike Boulevard there? And what does that mean? So I think that restricting the Bike Boulevard to just one block gets us 90% of the way to something that's going to score well in the ATP cycle. If you need more time to do it, I think Graham said you have three weeks before the next city council agenda has to be published on the 19th or so of April, because you would need to say, this is it by the 26th. And I guess my only question is, what are we, what are you going to know between now and the 19th of April that you don't know now?
Mr. McMinn, I've got to jump in here. We've got to vote to extend.
That was it. I'm done.
Thank you. We need to do a vote to extend. I know, do we want to take a break and push through till 10 o'clock? Is there support for that?
I'm fine continuing.
Is there a second on that? I would second.
I'll second the motion for an extension, but I think we should all recognize where we're not going to get to the last item on tonight's agenda.
So if we do the extension, and then we get through this item, and then we make a plan on a special meeting for the, because I believe it's a, we have a timing issue in terms of a contract. I'll look to Dr. Mitz regarding the water item.
Do you want me to do a roll call before we go forward?
I'm sorry. Yeah. So should we do a roll call here to continue, please?
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes, but I may step downstairs for two seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. So Dr. Mitz, if you could just give us a little indication in terms of timing.
Yes. There is more of a timing associated with the granting of the awarding of the contracts for the rate consultant. There is a lot of preliminary information that they have to gather, a lot of data gathering on the back end of it before we actually start getting into some of the more policy decisions. So if we could do a special meeting to at least grant the award of contract, and then the discussion items, discussion and direction from council, we could bring that at a special meeting and/or bring that forth at the next council meeting.
I would certainly like to post to the council, doing it at a special meeting, so that we stay on track as much as possible with that. But let's get through this, and then we'll touch base on that. So what I'm hearing, and I'll look to Mr. McCann. I certainly, and the Vice Mayor stepped away, but I support the idea of a non-binary look at what do, a couple of Bike Boulevards, if we look at, first, we look at the ATSSC suggestion, the gap suggestion that includes Bike Boulevards, if we look at both Oak and Church. As the Vice Mayor framed it, that's sort of where I'm looking too, but I do think we need some more work. I'm thinking over, you know, this period until that second April meeting, we have moved forward. We're getting more nuanced. I believe we're getting closer. And so if I look to the city manager, what would you propose in terms of how that work would get done to get us prepared for the second meeting in April? And first, I'll jump to Councilmember Chateau.
Well, that's all right. I'll hear the question answered first. Because I'm leaning in a different direction, if you want me to go forward. I think, to me, that we're not going to have the more information that we want in the next couple of weeks. So I still continue to support moving forward with choosing tonight the option that we want to do, which I put forward would have been Church Street.
And I'm seeing the Vice Mayor jumping back. I just wanted to say that I had been supporting that sort of non-binary approach, looking at the Bike Boulevards. And Councilmember Chateau had reiterated the support on Church, and I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. I was just going to actually echo Mr. McMinn's comments. I wrote a note here on the page. If we wait on a vote, what is it actually we need to answer? And are we going to get that in the next couple of weeks?
And Mr. McCann, do you have any thoughts here?
Sure. I would think over the next few weeks, we would look at the realities of the different classes, particularly on Oak, and determine, you know, how a Class Three or the elements of a Bike Boulevard could be achieved. And just answer that question. Can we satisfy both? Can we end up with a functioning Class Three or a Bike Boulevard and retain the parking on Oak? We talked with the property owners and the residents to get their thoughts on that. Additionally, we need to confirm the type of facility on the other segments. Mr. McMinn outlined sort of his thoughts about what those segments would be, a Class One here, a Class One here, et cetera. Those are not what's reflected in our general plan, so that's a change. And so we'd have to make sure that those property owners are on board with that concept as well. I know there's been a lot of work done over the last many months and years, as Mr. McMinn indicated. So my assumption is that those folks are warmed up to that topic already. But to be direct, we would look hard at the types of improvements that could be possible to address the concerns both on Church and on Oak.
Thank you. Mr. McMinn?
Just one quick point of clarification. I don't know how you interpret your general plan versus your bike and ped plan, but on your adopted St. Helena bicycle and pedestrian plan from June of this past year, there is a line showing the Vine Trail route that goes down basically railroad to Pratt, along 29 down railroad to Pratt and over, and then up along the highway. And that's on Figure One of your bike and pedestrian plan as of, this is January 2012. It may be superseded. I think you did change it at one point and put the Vine Trail in as a study area in your bike plan. So there is support for the fact that the city is considering what the city is considering right now, which is how to thread the needle.
Thank you. So in terms of moving forward here, Mr. McCann, are you here? We still have a couple of different thoughts. Nothing's, I'm not sure we're synthesized here. Councilmember Hardy, do you have any thoughts where we are now in terms of direction?
Well, I really, personally, I don't see a clear direction emerging from tonight's discussion. I don't, I certainly don't have a clear sense of direction myself, so I'm not in a good position to find the right out tonight.
And that is where I am as well. And my thought is that if staff and the city manager can work forward over the coming couple of weeks to get some more clarity here, answer some of the questions on both sides, and see if we can get to a spot. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. I was just thinking, if we're going to take some time to do that, I think that conversation should include, you know, the issue for our downtown commercial district is parking. It's an issue for everybody, right? We don't want any more shuttered businesses, so if we had addressed parking first, if we had a structure already underway, or a plan for a structure, nobody would care where we put the Vine Trail, right? So we're doing a little bit of the cart before the horse, and we don't really have time to run out and find money and put a down payment on a parcel and get going on a parking structure before we need to make a decision on the Vine Trail. But definitely, parking's the issue, and we're not addressing the issue, which is parking. So we have a conflict on timelines. I would just like to put those two things together. If we're going to take time tonight and delay a vote, then I'd like to ensure that we come back with some ideas and thoughts on what the city intends to do about its parking situation downtown and link those two things together.
I would support that. I'm supportive of that, certainly. And I see Councilmember Hall, I mean Hardy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on a positive note that I do think with a couple of weeks, I certainly can come back prepared to commit to a direction and a plan. I'm just not prepared to do it this evening.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Doring, any thoughts as we work towards giving direction here?
Just maybe one other piece of information that would be helpful for the public is the use of our Measure T funds and the financial obligations for the city. That would be a little helpful for me. You know, I'm not, I'm in no way any further along than anyone else. This is the most difficult, one of the most difficult issues that we've had to face. And I feel for all of the different stakeholders having the impact. Hopefully, we can keep this progress going. I'm not really wedded to any particular plan. I want a plan at some point. I think our council is going to have to, at some point, give direction that's a little clearer than tonight. So I'm hopeful that we'll get that done in the next meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up. I think Mr. Smooth's comments on Measure T were correct. Part of that must be spent on bike, on Class One bike lanes. My problem with that is, you know, I'd like to spend two and a half times what we're spending each year right now on fixing our roads. We're doing the minimum, and that's 100% of our Measure T. And nobody can tell me that they're satisfied with our roads today. So there will be a funding need. If it's a half million dollars over three years, it's not a huge enormous bite. It's something that none of us were planning for. You know, I don't think it's in our long-range financial forecast anywhere. So, you know, we still have a funding problem, but I think the issue of the Measure T, you know, if we're going to not put all of that into the roads, and some of it's going to go into bikes, and it sounds like maybe some of that is required, you know, where are we going to get money to fix our roads? Again, it's a priority thing for me. Why don't we spend every penny fixing our roads? Every road in town becomes a Vine Trail. You know, it's how we get around here. All of us love riding bikes. We need roads that function so we can ride our bikes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. McCann and then Mr. McMinn. I'll circle back on you, but I want to see what our city manager has at this point.
Just a comment in agreement with Mr. Hall. You know, the council identifies priorities, and those reflect the interests of the community. And those priorities are where we assign our finite dollars. And so if it's pavement, if it's parks, if it's art, that's a council decision. We're moving forward with what I understand to be the council's direction, which is to try to do a little bit of everything. So it is streets, and it is infrastructure, it is arts, and it is the Vine Trail. This is an assignment that we have, so we're moving it forward. I apologize that the matter is so murky, and we don't have more clear answers tonight. I think it's a bit of the nature of trying to fit this into a built community. I keep coming back to that. We've got some conflicts, and we have some difficulties. I do think there's a way, though, to thread the needle. I forget who said that, but someone did. And I think it's a matter of getting the issues on the table and understanding what's most important. I think Councilmember Chateau was trying to get to that with her comment. I take from this conversation that, one, there's strong support to find a way I take from this conversation that, one, there's strong support, uh, to find a way, uh, to encourage. Uh, the Vine Trail and bring it forward, uh, as a continuous, uh, link in the valley. Recognizing the, uh, constraints that we have. I, I've heard, uh, um, the need to be respectful of the interests and the concerns of. Of our residents and the neighbors, uh, and also, uh, a, a real, uh, keen sensitivity to the loss of parking. And so, uh, i- if I heard that correctly, we will take those ingredients. And over the next few weeks, uh, talk with, uh, some folks in the community, talk with Mr. McMinn, make sure we understand things with Mr. Wattsworth. And come back to you with a, uh, more fine-tuned recommendation at your next meeting.
Thank you. Uh, and Mr. McMinn, uh, and then we'll, we'll move forward here.
Yeah, I'm just, it, it just is, I guess it's still unclear to me what exactly. Mr. McCann and, and the Vine Trail are gonna intently do in the next two or three weeks. I mean, what exactly, you know, what information do you need back?
M- Mr. McMinn, I think w- where we're at is, is, uh, the delicate issue, as I said, which we're doing a heart surgery here. This is, uh, really the harder of the upper valley and we're working through it, uh, patiently, working through it together. And I think Mr. McCann outlined it pretty well, so I think the continued dialogue and your participation is, is critical at this point. So I think the direction from the council is we wanna work further with, with you, with staff, with community. And we, we should by the next meeting be able to be further along to, to provide what, what's needed to move forward.
We're happy to partner with you to, to get to an, to an answer.
Great, thank you. Okay, so with that, if, if there's no, uh, additional, uh, comment, council comment on this. Uh, Mr. McCann, I believe you have direction. Very good, thank you. Uh, we really appreciate the Vine Trail being here, the patience, we appreciate the community input, everybody, this is a delicate, delicate steps. And we're, but we're getting, we're getting there. Um, so with that, oh, I'm seeing, um, Sean and, uh, Ms. Casey White, in terms of longer comment. Um. We, we will want to, um, have the, uh, questions, uh, submitted as well, so, but please, uh.
I just wanted to reiterate your earlier comment, Mayor, that, um, I have a list of nine clear questions. That came from the public comments that we'll be happy to write, um, a written, um, statement for. And including some of the questions that came up from the city council, um, and we'll have that for you in forty-eight hours.
That's terrific. Thank you very much. That's very helpful, very, very much appreciated. So with that, um, we'll move forward and we're gonna just open the, a little conversation about, uh, the next item. And, uh, how we can get into it and my hope is for a, a special, uh, council meeting. Because this is something I think critical to move forward on, our water rate study. Um, is there, are there any thoughts from council on, uh, when or support for a special meeting to look at this? Before the next regularly scheduled meeting? I'm seeing, uh, the city clerk.
Um, staff was wondering if, if we could maybe have a special meeting on Friday?
To me, uh, we, I believe we have a climate action meeting in the morning till eleven and then, uh, I'm. I have a, I'm pretty good in the afternoon. There's a few things I can move around. I have something at two thirty I'm supposed to do. But between eleven and two thirty, or any time from three thirty on. Till five.
Why don't I follow up with all the council members in the morning and we can determine a time that'll work for everybody?
Do folks think Friday will work?
Yep.
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay, great. Uh, Mr. McCann?
Um, oh, mute, sorry. Yeah, yes, I'm sorry. Um, uh, maybe we can just ask the city attorney if there's any, uh, limitations on, on, uh, notice for that special meeting?
The special meetings only require twenty-four hours notice, so, so we, we should be okay for that. I, I did know I cannot be there for a, a Friday afternoon meeting, but I know it's a short item and I can find someone to cover it for me.
Great.
Great, thank you. And, you know, I know there are community mem- members on it. We're hoping to speak on that tonight. So we'll make sure everybody knows when the meeting is and appreciate everybody's patience, the, the council, the community, uh, staff. Everybody working through this, so we'll get there and really appreciate it. So with that, uh, is there, if there's any additional comment before we adjourn? And seeing none, thank everybody and we will see you soon.
Thank you.